All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Okay, good evening, everyone. All right, good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see so many people here tonight. I don't know why everyone's here, but maybe let me check the agenda. Okay, we have called tonight's meeting to order at just after 6 o'clock, 6:01. We want to thank the Temecula Valley Youth Symphony for the prelude music. Let's give them a round of applause. And we'll go ahead and start with our invocation by Pastor Steve Redden of Crosspoint Church Temecula, and then I will go ahead and lead us in the flag salute. Please rise.
Our God, I, we are grateful for this city that we get to live in, the privilege it is to live in this beautiful place, and God, for the men and women who have made this city what it is and provide the ongoing guidance to lead us. So, thank you for them and for what they do here, selflessly investing their time and their talent, their experience. Pray you bless them for that. God, we also recognize that ultimately, our authority to lead is not ultimate. It comes from you, and so we recognize you as the one that we're ultimately accountable to, not just our voters and our constituents or to each other. And so, give us the courage when it comes time to make decisions that are difficult but are the right thing to do. Give us courage to do that. And then, God, sometimes it's not always obvious, clearly right and wrong. It's more what's wise and best. So, give us that kind of next level counterintuitive wisdom when we need it. God, the kind of wisdom that Jesus talked about when He urged us to be as calculating and shrewd as serpents and as harmless and innocent as doves. Just ask you for your guidance here for these next few hours as decisions are made that impact the lives of the people of this city. Amen.
It's typical in nights like this that I would defer the Pledge of Allegiance to someone special, and tonight I wanted to defer to Mary Ann Edwards, in true Mary Ann Edwards fashion, and the Mary Ann Edwards that we all love so much. She's on her way. So, if you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Calvis.
Here.
Mayor Schwenk.
I'm here.
Mayor Potemstewart.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move right on into presentations with or without our honored guest, although she should be here in just a minute or two. Is she coming in? Okay, let's all, when she walks in, let's all give her a nice round of applause. Welcome, Mary Ann Edwards. All right. Mary Ann, if you could make your way down, we'd love to see you here in the front row. There could literally not be a more fitting way to start this meeting than right now. Tom will be here, I'm sure. Welcome. So, we have a separate agenda for this presentation tonight, the award of recognition to former Councilmember Mary Ann Edwards. So, I will go ahead and go down a list. We have many distinguished community members, electeds, and just really good people in the room this evening. I think it's going to be a wonderful night, and I'm really excited to get this started. So, our first speaker, a group of speaker, will be the Pachanga Band of Indians, if they are here. Okay, we will move on to Congressman Ken Calvert. Ken Calvert's office?
Nobody has a parking pass.
There must be some traffic.
We do have a representative from Pachanga who is here just supporting Mary Ann in the past.
Okay, perfect. And if some of the folks show up a little bit after, I'm sure everyone's obviously getting off work and trying to get here, we can always go back. We'll go ahead and move on to Congressman Isa, who has submitted a video for our pleasure.
Good evening. As so often happens, I'm supposed to be somewhere else when I'd like to be in Temecula, and particularly for something that I think only happens once in two decades, and it's not my retirement, it is yours. And this is a great appreciation for a mayor's mayor. And, Mary Ann, I can't begin to tell you how special your relationship with me has been when I've represented Temecula, not represented Temecula, and represented Temecula again. So, a well-earned congratulations, and I still hope to see you. I know you'll be involved.
Wonderful. Okay, next is Assemblymember Kate Sanchez, and I believe Desiree Ferraro might be here this evening. Okay. I know we have--
They did bring in certificate. If we want to get a picture, Mary Ann, holding that, as well as the one from Congressman Calvert.
Well, maybe, let's do that at the end, because if they show up, we want to make sure we include them. All right, Assemblymember Marie Waldron, and I see Cory Uden over here on my left. Welcome, Cory.
Well, thank you very much for having us here. Obviously, Marie had the honor of representing Temecula for 10 years there. Well, you represented us very well. We all learned a little something from you, and this community has been so privileged to have you as a leader. So, we did produce this resolution here at the end, and then it got lost in our office in the move. You know, we just couldn't leave a piece of Temecula behind. It had to come with us. But thankfully, we did get it here, and we're so honored to present it and recognize all of the great contributions you've made to this community. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I sure will.
Okay, next is California State Senator Kelly Ciarto, and we have a video from Kelly.
Hi, Mary Ann. So, I guess we go back like 25 years now, and the whole time that I've known you, you have been such a contributor to the city of Temecula, whether it's on the school board, or the Boys and Girls Club, and on the city council, certainly. So, you've really left a big stamp on a lot of the things that Temecula is known for. So, I just wanted to say congratulations. I wish I could be there in person, but I really value the relationship that we've had all these years and the kind of person that you are. You are a perfect representative for the city of Temecula, and the city of Temecula is better for it.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, Riverside County Third District Supervisor Chuck Washington. Welcome, Chuck.
I have this. You want to hold it?
Sure.
Do you want to be up here and help me tell the story?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean--
Which story? No, go ahead. I trust you.
They wrote down words for me to say, but I'm thinking I'm just going to wing it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because, well, everything that's in here is in here.
Okay.
So, later, at your convenience, you can read the proclamation. You know, Mary Ann and I started when my predecessor on the Board of Supervisors got elected to the Board of Supervisors and created a vacancy on the city council. And we were about to set off on this path of interviewing people and having people apply, and, you know, a lot of fun stuff goes on in closed session. I don't know if the public knows about it, but there's eating, and there's talking, and there's teasing one another. But in a sort of a very serious moment, Mike Nagar said, "Why would we go through all of that? Mary Ann just got elected not long ago to the school board, and we know if we put this to an election, she's going to win. So, why don't we just go ahead and appoint her?" Well, I don't know. We can put that on an agenda and see how the public feels about it.
And nobody showed up.
And we did. And in a very open meeting like this today, we said, "Let's appoint Mary Ann to fill that vacancy." And then, an amazing thing started. That was January of 2005. I remember it very distinctly. And for the next 10 years, it was the same five of us. And in that period of time, we agreed on 100% of the things we talked about.
We did.
They bought it.
Yeah.
We did not.
Yeah, we didn't, but--
And I can remember in one of my reelection efforts during a candidate's forum, one of the challengers said, "Why do you guys always agree with one another so much? You agree more than people who are married." And I said, "Well, no, my wife and I agree pretty much all the time, too, but we air our disagreements at the park--
Yeah.
--in closed session--
Yeah.
Other places, just not here, mostly.
Well, I was going to say, sometimes we do here, but we manage to work everything out, you know, and it was a lot of compromise, yes.
Yeah, much like a marriage, right?
Yes.
Yeah. You were very involved in the activities in government, as well as in the nonprofit industry. And I think, you know, it's hard to encapsulate all of what you've done for this community and the love you've shown. Sometimes, love shows up a little late, but it always shows up.
Be quiet.
You know, that's the joke amongst everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, but we love you, and thank you for all that you've done for the city of Temecula.
Aren't you going to tell people that we were actually twins separated at birth?
All right, so there was a competition, karaoke competition, and Mary Ann, you know, sang professionally, right? And we were at The Storm, and it was that duo, that duet from Grease. And we practiced it a little bit beforehand, and I got my nerve up. I've never--
I talked you into it, I think.
She talked me into it. And we got ready to sing, and the words came up, and she wouldn't sing, because, I don't know, something about loving and--
Maybe I couldn't see.
That's what it was.
Yeah, but you were a very good sport, always a very good sport. And, you know, I will say to you that we have had tremendous, we've been very fortunate, because, you know, with Jeff and then followed by you, we've had tremendous representation on the Board of Supervisors, and that was not always the case. As Temecula started to grow, Riverside County had already moved beyond, and so we had to play catch-up. We had to play a lot of catch-up in town, you know, building roads, you know, go figure and things like that. So, you've done a great job.
We moved here in 89 to Marietta. Marietta mayor's here tonight. And then, in 2000, we moved here to Temecula. When we moved here in 89, I didn't realize we were moving to the meth capital of the world. But I am so proud of what our communities down here in the southwest have become, the great communities to raise a family, safe, good schools, an opportunity to work, find jobs. And I couldn't love a place more than I love Riverside County right now, and you've been a big part of that. So, thank you.
Well, Temecula is no place like home.
Wait, let me get one more on my good side.
Okay.
Doing it for the gram, I think.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
You nearly tried to throw me in the duck pond.
I did, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, our first event at the duck pond, or my first event as a Councilmember at the duck pond, Chuck picked me up and nearly threw me in the duck pond.
All right, our next speaker is former city council member and mayor Jeff Comichero. Please join us at the podium.
This is a roast, isn't it?
Right.
Well, I'll start off being serious, and we'll see where it goes. I first met Mary Ann the first time I ran for city council in 1997, and she was my very first donor. She and Tom gave me $20. No, it was $20. I know it's grown in your mind over the years, but it was $20. I have the FPPC show you. And I was very, very grateful, because I didn't hardly know anybody, and I didn't have a lot of support. And so, $20 was a, I was getting $5 here and $5 there, so that was a big contribution. And I've never forgotten that, and I know you've never let me forget that. But from there, we went whichever ways we went. Eventually, Mary Ann wound up a school board and then city council. I have to tell you that although, you know, we can sit here and we can talk about your accomplishments over the years, the help you provided in getting, I think it was $90 million in funding to fix the creek, so we didn't have the same problems we had in 1993 when we had horrible flooding down here. And Tuesday was, Sunday was a good example. It wasn't the event we were expecting, but had it been, the new configuration of the creek would have handled it. So, you know, that was a major accomplishment. What you did for homelessness and the program that you came up with, and do we still have homeless people in Temecula? Sure, we do, but it's a lot less than it was before, and through the, what was it called? Compassionate-- Responsible compassion, and that's still going on today. And that gives our police and our other personnel the ability to do what they need to do to interact with our homeless folks, and either get them off the street or at least get them the help they need to better their lives. So, and the contributions have been endless. But what I really appreciated over the years was the fact that, and Chuck alluded to it, the way we all worked together. It was Camelot here for those 10 years, and we did have our disagreements. There's no question about it. But we always knew that we all wanted to get to the same place, and that was whatever it took to benefit our residents, because that was our job. We didn't always agree on how to get there, and so, sometimes we hashed it out here if it was appropriate. Sometimes we hashed it out in closed session. Sometimes we put on boxing gloves, you know, whatever it took. But we always seemed to get there. And the notion that we always agreed in all the votes were 5-0, we had all decided early on in that tenure of 10 years that 5-0 votes were important, because they demonstrated to the public that there was agreement, that we all felt strongly about the direction that we were taking. And if we could possibly get there, it was worth the task of hashing it out and compromising. We often knew if we wanted to do something, we could get there with a 3-2 vote, but that wasn't good enough. We wanted to have a 5-0 vote, and I won't say we always did, we almost always did. And one time, we didn't, I'll piggyback on Chuck's, come on up, because your arms are not long enough to punch me from there. When we, when Jeff Stone was elected and we had a vacancy, what Chuck said was true. We talked about it, and when it came out to closed session and we were voting on whether or not to appoint or hold a special election, the vote was 4 to 1. I was the one.
I remember.
And the reason I was the one is just because I felt philosophically, we owed it to our residents to hold an election. When I lost that vote and the next motion came up, now we're going to appoint, let's appoint Mary Ann, well, I was the first one to raise my hand, because I knew that was the best approach. So, I'm glad you remembered that.
I do.
I kind of never lived that down, but anyway--
It wasn't a bad, it wasn't a bad--
No, I still felt good about it. I just didn't want you to think it was something, you know, personal, because obviously it wasn't.
Well, yeah, after all these years--
After all these years, I don't care.
Right, exactly.
But there is something, I didn't come here with a plaque, or there's no new car outside--
Jewelry?
All right, no jewelry.
No ju--
You need an Apple Watch?
No.
Want to buy a watch?
No.
I'm from New York. That's what happens. But I do want to give you something.
Okay.
Because after, how many years was it? Let's see, 97 to 26 years since you gave me that contribution?
Aww.
I love you.
I'm going to frame it. Yes, I want you to sign it, and your bank account number.
Jeff, could--
Come back, come back.
Come back with your proclamation.
Yeah, here's my plaque.
We have several pictures together, and neither of us had gray hair.
That's true. Some of us still don't.
I do, I like it.
All right. All right, next, we have a video from former city council member and Nevada State Senator Jeff Stone.
Hello, my friends in Temecula. This is former councilman Jeff Stone, and I am honored to say a few words about my friend, Mary Ann Edwards. What I love about Mary Ann is she's always put her faith, family, and our community first in her priorities. Beautiful family that we've been family friends for many years, even before either of us were in elective office. Tom, of course, a gentleman, and her wonderful kids, Jonathan, Casey, and Cory. I know how proud they are of their mom, who, early on in Temecula, got involved in numerous nonprofits, organizations, and the one that sticks out in my mind certainly is Assistance League, where she took a leadership role in making sure that kids that couldn't afford to go to school with the appropriate school supplies and clothing got what they needed. But that wasn't enough for her. She wanted to go on the Traffic and Safety Commission in Temecula. I was on the city council then that proudly voted to put her on the Traffic and Safety Commission, where she did a fabulous job. And then, as we all know, she wanted to even get more involved and ran for the Temecula Unified School District Board of Trustees and won that in 2000. And then, when I decided to move on from the Temecula City Council and run for the County Board of Supervisors, and I was successfully elected, the city unanimously picked Mary Ann Edwards to serve in my place on the Temecula City Council, where she would do wonderful things, from economic development to building new parks, making Old Town spectacular, building the new city hall in downtown Temecula, thriving tourism business. Mary Ann Edwards' leadership is demonstrated throughout the wonderful city of Temecula. And so, I want to congratulate her for her successful reign, if you will, of being a Temecula City Council member. I also remember what a beautiful voice she has, and has sung the national anthem countless times for many organizations. But Temecula is a better place to live, because Mary Ann Edwards, her stamp of successes written all over the city. So, Mary Ann, congratulations to you for a job well done, and I'm honored to call you a friend, and I'm thrilled that you helped make Temecula the wonderful place that it is to live today. God bless you and your family.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have former city council member Matt Ron has also submitted a video.
It's a wonderful community of ours, and I look forward to seeing you soon. Take care.
All right, that was short and sweet. Thanks so much, Matt. You're very succinct tonight. All right, Jonathan's rewinding it. I was going to say.
Hi, Mary Ann. So sorry that I can't be with you here tonight. Unfortunately, I'm working in New York. We had a firefighter conference this week, but I would definitely want to be here tonight, talking with you in person and giving you a big hug. I didn't want to miss this opportunity to personally thank you for all your service to the city of Temecula, and not just for the many years that you've served on the city council, but for the years of service and your continued dedication to our community. Yes, we all see you out there still being a remarkable steward of our town and a consummate professional and representative for all that is good and just in our community. And for that, Temecula, we will always be thankful. But me personally, you know, our history goes back much farther than just being on the city council together. We stood shoulder to shoulder during the Liberty Quarry issue, and during those long years, I was able to know you not only as mayor and council member, but as a friend. You and your family welcomed me into your home and showed me exactly why you live in Temecula. You're a big part of why we ultimately moved here, to live, to work, and to raise our family. You made it so welcoming, so friendly, and so much the home that we always wanted to be a part of. Like many others, you inspired me to give back to our town, and yes, ultimately serving alongside you as a council member. You have a kind, professional hand in governance, and you've helped Temecula navigate some of the most challenging times as a city. For me, you'll always hold a very special and very dear place in my heart for making me feel welcome in this remarkable community and helping me understand how best to serve the town that we all love. I would say happy retirement, but I'm still seeing you at meetings continuing your passionate support of Temecula. So, instead, I'm just going to say, "See you around." Thank you again for all of your years of service for this wonderful community of ours, and I look forward to seeing you soon. Take care.
All right, thank you, Matt. We appreciate that. Next up is a video from Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency.
Hi, Mary Ann. On behalf of the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, we just want to take a minute to thank you for your service to the RCHCA over the years, from going out with us in the field to do our translocation studies at Diamond Valley Lake with the San Diego Zoo, to your legislative outreach efforts to help us downlist the species in 2022 from endangered to threatened. Your accomplishments over the years are immense. We just wanted to take one minute to thank you. Sincerely appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
All right, thank you. And next, we'll move on to some of our regional cities. This evening, we have the city of Marietta here tonight. Looks like we have the mayor here. Welcome.
All right. On behalf of the city of Marietta and the entire city council, I'm honored to share my sincere thank you for your service, Mary Ann. You have dedicated a substantial portion of your life to making Temecula and this region a very amazing place to live. Your tenure is impressive, 17 years, and I can't imagine running four campaigns. I want to thank you in particular for being an amazing neighbor and thinking regional. Your regional perspective has been amazing, and I want to thank you personally for when being-- And I want to thank you personally for when being elected, you were so sincere and friendly to share your knowledge and to help any way you could. So it is my honor to be here on behalf of the city of Marietta and myself.
I know, you said what you asked for. I think you said that before. I know if it's a comfort or if it's a concern, but council members from other cities, we all know each other, and so it's really great because we get to work together and that, you know.
So true.
We can work out amazing things to benefit everyone, and we do think regionally.
We do, yes.
Lovely. You'll be blessed. But I'm not letting you go far.
I know.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the city of Menifee. Welcome. I see Mayor Bill Zimmerman there. Welcome.
Can I have you come up, please? How are you?
Good. I asked Mary Ann to come up here, and that way I don't have to have my neck all sideways. And because I want to speak to you, on behalf of all of us in the city of Menifee, we have appreciated working with you, not just as a city person here on the dais, but also regionally. I know you are RCTC, and you are lots of many other things, League of Cities. We see you at all those events. And one of the things that I've always enjoyed about you the most is that no matter how serious this business is, as we all know, you don't let it go to your head, and you don't, you, you just always show this humility and this kind of fun personality, and you make light of it. It's a serious thing, but you have led by example and shown us how to lead and be a personable leader. And so, thank you so much for everything you do. Congratulations on having served so many years here. As I drive around this beautiful, beautiful city, I can't help but think that you had a hand in this, and in my mind, this was something that you were always so influential in making it the best it can be. So, thank you for your many, many years of service.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, we have a nice little plaque that we made for you, and somehow it got mixed up in the transition, so it's on the way.
Don't worry. Well, I'll still see you.
Yes, but maybe we can.
So, I've known Bill since he was, before he was on the Planning Commission. Yeah, a long time. Didn't we work on the Riverside County Regional Integrated Plan together?
Yes, RCTIP, and also Boys and Girls Club things, and all that, many, many years. So anyway, you've been a great leader.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much.
He's so very tall.
Congratulations.
All right, next up is the city of Canyon Lake, and we have Mayor Jeremy Smith here this evening.
I gotta do the awkward neck thing. Are you, come on. Are you having fun?
Yes.
See, tonight is your night. So the mayor gave you a hard time for being late, but you can be late anytime you want when it's your night tonight.
Because I'm late whether it's my night or anybody else's night, so.
So, you know, I'm a little confused, because when we were doing some research, all the years that you've served on the council, you're not a day past thirty, so that means you convince the register of voter.
Where's your twenty-dollar bill?
Yeah, well, that's another thing. That, that needs to have CPI on it, because I think that twenty should be equivalent to a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty. But some of you that don't know in the audience, we get to serve on regional boards together, and that's why a lot of council members are here, because we serve on RTA, or WRCOG, or RCTC, and it's those relationships that let us branch out of our cities. And we get to learn about what other city councils are doing, what other jurisdictions are doing, and we get to implement that in our own town. So, the regional approach is, I think, how government needs to work. And I just want to say, thank you for being a good steward of regional support. Thank you for continuing to reach out to other cities. I appreciate you. I miss you. Our conversations, and I just want to say, thank you for your leadership here, and tonight's your night. Enjoy it.
Oh, thank you.
You're very welcome.
You did a great job. Great job.
Thank you. Here you go. We brought ours, unlike Menifee, so.
That's regional support.
That was really funny.
Budget cuts, you know.
All right. Next up, we have the city of Wildomar. Welcome. Oh, great, I see Mayor Morbido and Councilmember Moore. Welcome.
So we've brought you a certificate. It says, for twenty years of service, support, and dedication to the city of Temecula and Riverside County, including the city of Wildomar. On behalf of the city council staff and citizens of Wildomar, we thank you for your service to our community, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Oh, thank you, guys. So, I have a personal story. Okay.
So, we have just become a city, so this is 2008. We're a new city. I'm a new council member, and I never played golf before, but I signed up for the Animal Friends of the Valley Golf Tournament, and who did I get picked with? With Mary Ann. So my word for you is kindness. You showed me so much kindness that day that I'll never forget it. I felt out of my element.
Oh, we had fun.
I didn't even have gloves. Member of, Councilmember Marsha Swanson?
Yes.
She had loaned me her, her clubs, and I was unwrapping them in the parking lot. So, I'm brand new, I've never played golf, and here I go out. And then the other council member that was with us from another city, he was slightly irritated that I never played golf before, because he really wanted to win. So, but you weren't, so thank you so much for everything.
We had a lot of fun.
We had a lot of fun.
And you've done an amazing job. I'm very, very proud of you.
Thank you. So then we became colleagues, and then we became friends.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
And my goodness, I've known you since you were a private citizen, showing up for every meeting, especially RTA-related meetings. Yeah, so, so, thank you. And now, and look at you now, you're all grown up.
Mayor. Right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you ever get your own clubs?
Yes.
Oh, good.
All right, thank you. Next up is Western Riverside Council of Governments. We have, oh, there we go, Dr. Kurt Wilson.
Thank you. So as I hear everybody talk about how long they have known you, I feel a little left out. I feel a little embarrassed, because I haven't known you nearly as long as all the other people in this room. But the good news is, I'm not here because of the length of our relationship, but the depth of the appreciation that WRCOG and RCHCA have for you and what you've done. So you're actually one of the first people I met when I returned to the region. You were in the second round of people. You were gonna be in the first round, but you were on your way, so you got there for the second round. And once you, once you were there.
Consistently.
You, you made, with your personality, you made such an impression on the room, your big personality, so you make this incredible first impression on everybody when you come there. But the reason that we appreciate you is the lasting impression you leave, because of the commitment, the passion you have, not only for the people of Temecula, but even for the environment. You may have noticed when Brian was talking, he had a little stuffed animal next to him, of the Stevens kangaroo rat. That was just for you. But we see what you've done, not only for this community, the people of the community, but even the endangered species within this community, to make everything better. So on behalf of the, the entire committee and the staff of WRCOG and RCHCA, congratulations, and we appreciate everything you've done.
That's okay. Okay. I think you're listening, Brian. I have that K-Rat. I have one of those, and my dog really wants it.
All right. Next up, we have Riverside County Transportation Commission and the Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority. This is a video sent in by Aaron Haake.
On behalf of the Riverside County Transportation Commission and the Western Riverside Regional Conservation Authority, I want to emphatically congratulate Mary Ann Edwards on her career as a public servant for the city of Temecula, but also for the entire region and county of Riverside. Back when Mary Ann was first elected, she was appointed as one of the early board members of the RCA, which oversees a multiple-species habitat conservation plan that is second to none in the entire country. And during her time of leadership, she was able to guide us through the acquisition over sixty thousand acres of local habitat that protects endangered species, open space, and is a legacy for all of us, really, our children and our grandchildren here in Western Riverside County. She provided this leadership with her trademark enthusiasm, positivity, humor, but also firm direction in what we needed to be doing and what we needed to be looking at. As staff, we always appreciated her engagement, and what she has done and what is being done in the region here in terms of transportation and conservation is a testament to who she is as a public servant. During her time as an RCTC Commissioner on our board, she led us through the, the start of the French Valley Parkway project that's under construction today. RCTC is a proud partner with the city of Temecula on that project, and she was there to make sure that we were there by the city's side. We thank Mary Ann for everything that she's done for the region, and we just can't say enough about all of her accomplishments. Thank you so much.
Hey, next up, we have Riverside Transit Agency. We do have a video, but I also noticed, longtime former CEO Larry Rubio's in the audience, so I'll certainly extend an invitation, Larry, if after the video, if you'd like to come speak. We'd love to hear from you. Go ahead and play RTA's video.
Good evening, Mayor Schwenk, members of the council, and everyone in attendance. My name is Kristin Worsinski, and I'm the CEO of the Riverside Transit Agency, also known as RTA. It is my privilege to recognize and honor Mary Ann Edwards for her dedication to the RTA Board of Directors for sixteen years. During her tenure, the agency offered reduced fare programs, improved connectivity throughout the county, and maintained a thriving free-ride program for area college students. She was also an active member and supporter of the Southwest T-NOW Chapter, which promotes public transit in Southern Riverside County and beyond. Mary Ann, I commend you for your support of public transit, your devotion to the community, and your dedication to having some of the best shoes I have ever seen. It is with the deepest gratitude that the RTA Board of Directors and the staff honor you today for your service. Please accept this proclamation on behalf of the agency. Take care. We miss you.
And Larry, please come up.
So what do we say? Go Dodgers. I'm just gonna stand at the side.
Honorable mayor and council member. It's been a couple of years since I spoke in front of a body this big, so I wrote some notes here. I'm gonna try to avoid them, but if I refer to them, I'm out of practice. Dodgers, one of the things I can say about Mary Ann, through the World Series during the pandemic, we watched the games together.
Yeah.
Virtually.
Yeah.
And there's three people in the county who know more about the Dodgers than me. Two of them are in this room, Mary Ann, Jeff, and Mary Ann Ashley. But she, she can hold her own with the Dodgers. Couple of quick stories I wanted to tell. I first met Mary Ann around 2006. By the way, I'm not representing the Riverside Transit Agency. I'm here as a private citizen. I've been promoted. So, I retired a couple of years ago. Around 2006, we were in labor negotiations. I'm getting a lot of guidance from Jeff. He's, he's on the board, and Mary Ann's on the board, but she comes into a closed session. It was my first time meeting you, and she came in, I gave my presentation. There was a lot of chatter, a lot of dialogue, a lot of different opinions. We're on the verge of a strike. Mary Ann asked three questions. It was Brown Act meeting, I can't tell you what the questions were, but she summed it all up. She shut down the dialogue, got me to open my eyes to something different. We avoided the strike, we settled the contract, and it was with your help and your guidance that we did that. I'll always be appreciative to you for that. Second story, we travel with WRCOG.
Oh.
You know where I'm going. We travel with WRCOG to a naval facility up in the Bay Area to experience an autonomous car. So we get in the autonomous car, and we're driving around. They happen to have a lot of wild turkeys there. And now, we've heard her sing. She used to come to our rodeos and sing the National Anthem, beautiful voice, but she can also gobble. And as Mary Ann would drive by with her husband, Tom, he was there, he's a witness, she'd roll her window down, and she'd gobble at a turkey, and the turkey would gobble back. And this continued on. We had more people watching her gobble than were interested in the autonomous vehicles that we were in.
How many of you knew that turkeys respond in that way? I'll be, yeah, see, any farmers, any farmers in the audience? Yeah, it's really true.
It's true. So from your business side of bringing boardroom clarity with intellectual integrity to complex topics, to your artistic side of singing the National Anthem at events, you can sing along to that if you want. To your humor side of gobbling at turkeys while driving in autonomous vehicles, and that's when you'd have to be there.
Yeah.
You're a sophisticated superstar. I appreciate all you did for RTA, the region, but especially me. And I have a quote, I'm gonna paraphrase a quote you said once. "Good, even great council members come and go, but treasured councilmen who embody the best in humanity are like diamonds, very rare and very precious." Mary Ann, you're a treasured council member. Thank you for all you did.
Oh, thank you. You're a, you're a, you're a good one.
Give it to me, my friend.
Just gobble, 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 gobble.
I thought that story was going to autonomous roadkill for a second.
For another retirement.
Yeah, we're turkey family, right.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Rancho California Water District. Welcome.
So, as it happens, our agencies almost exist in parallel universes. You know, we serve the same constituents and the same customers, and yet, we actually have not that much interaction. But when we do, and Mary Ann is an example of this, we get great collaboration and support from the city for the things that we need our help with. So with that, we've adopted a resolution commemorating Mary Ann's service to the community, and we appreciate this opportunity to share that with her.
Wonderful.
I'm prepared, all right, with the storm?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got some free water.
Next up, we have Eastern Municipal Water District. Good evening.
Yes, I'm Steve Corona, Eastern Municipal Water District. I'm, I'm here representing Eastern. I'm also representing the Corona family out on Highway seventy-nine. I've known Mary Ann for a very long time, and I don't think a lot of people know how big of a farm girl she is. She started attending Riverside County Farm Bureau annual meetings back when she was consulting for San Diego Gas and Electric, way back when. And she then got on school board, and at that time, I was, I was on the board of Rancho California Water District. And Metropolitan Water District used to do a solar, solar cup.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so, the, the schools from Temecula did very well this one year, and they had, Rancho got some trophies together for them and everything, and I was a member of the ad hoc committee, so I was gonna go to the, the meeting and present the trophies.
It's a boat race.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a solar-powered boat race, and the kids have to build the boats and, and power them, and, and so, anyway, I go to the meeting, and there's nowhere to park, and I was shocked. I was like, there should be hardly anybody at these meetings. In those days, it's small meeting, nobody, nobody went to stuff. Well, it turns out that the teachers are about to strike, and so all the teachers are there. So they hustled me into this, into the meeting, and Mary's, Mary Ann's up there, she's all smiles, and, yeah, everything's great, the room's packed with unhappy teachers, but we're gonna honor these kids. So I got up and I said, well, it's so good to see that there's so many people here that are interested in the solar cup. And got a pretty good laugh out of it, but, but the best part about it was that because there were so many people, and they were teachers, these youngsters, each one of them got a huge applause for their work that they did on the, on the solar cup. And Mary Ann was a big cheerleader, standing ovation for every, every one of these kids. And that was the first great thing. Then she got on the city council, and she, she attended a, a meeting over in Los Ranchitos. You may not like this story very much, I just show what a country girl you are, but the city was talking about widening Inez Road. And of course, in Los Ranchitos, it's a hot topic, nobody wants road widened. So, Mary Ann was new, and we went to this meeting, and she, she introduced herself and, and talked about, you know, she grew up on a farm in Michigan.
Missouri.
Missouri. Same thing. But anyway.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's cold. And she proceeded to tell us what a farm girl she was, and how she knew how to castrate a pig. and how she knew how to castrate a pig. And well, all the guys in the rooms legs crossed, and the women, sorry, looking kind of sour. Larry Markham and I are looking, where's the door out of here? But anyway, she actually calmed all these people down. They were very upset at the beginning of the meeting. And it just shows what her talent in talking to people. And so, you know, Jack talked about water. And water seems to be overlooked all the time. You know, everybody, as long as they turn the faucet on, the water comes on. Everyone seems to be happy. The toilet's flush. Everything's great. But when there's not enough water, people get a little upset. And Mary Ann was always the one that would come to the ag meetings. She would come to some of our district meetings to support water in Temecula, water for our general area. And big supporter of agriculture. And so I'm here to thank you for your great public service, your support of agriculture, and your support of our great water industry. Thank you.
It always gets back to castrating the pig. Are you going to stand close enough?
All right, thank you. Next, we have Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, I have my rotary pin on right here.
Okay.
There it is, right there.
Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here representing the Temecula Valley Chamber Board of Directors, and we have several of us here. And it's truly our honor to stand before you today to recognize a true leader and someone we truly admire. Mary Ann, for two decades, you've served as a member of the Temecula City Council, mayor four times. You've made an undeniable impact on the community that we know you love. She stands as the longest-tenured woman to serve on the council. And I've always thought best dressed and best shoes. I gotta agree on that. Your years of service speak to your desire to give back to the city of Temecula and its people. Your passion for public service is so obviously from the heart. And it's further exemplified by your avid support of the mission of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. And that's to help businesses prosper and our community thrive.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi.
Throughout your tenure, the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce has truly valued its partnership with the city of Temecula. Part of that partnership included co-hosting your state of the city addresses as mayor. Your themes for the annual event through the years were Temecula Cares, Community Pride, Seize the Moment, and A Foundation for Success. Do you remember that one? All of which showcased your vision and heart for the community.
On behalf of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors and staff, we cannot overstate our appreciation for your genuine service to the city of Temecula. Your unparalleled commitment to the community and public service will always remain an inspiration to us all. We wish you the very best as you continue to embark on new and exciting journeys. We know you're not done yet.
And please accept this plaque on behalf of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. It says, in part, "A truly great leader, hard to find, difficult to part with, impossible to forget."
Thank you, Mary Ann.
A lot of people don't realize that our Chamber of Commerce is remarkable. They sponsor legislation. They have so many programs and, you know, learning opportunities for new businesses. They welcome the new businesses. They re-welcome businesses who have, you know, who are reopening or having a new grand opening. The chamber is amazing, and there's always something going on. So if you're a business owner and you do not belong to the chamber, you need to join because you're missing out. She's hired!
Yeah, right?
Director of outreach now.
Thanks, you guys. Some of the best ambassadors for the city.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we have Visit Temecula Valley. Okay.
I want to interrupt you.
Please feel free.
I had asked to speak. I've known you for a long time. I'm a little bit afraid of you coming off the chamber. I mean, off the board. When you first went on to the Boys and Girls Club, you cost me a lot of money.
I know. Thank you.
So depending where you're going, it may cost me a lot of money. But I, put the mic up. See, now she's telling me what to do. When I think about you, I think of the term integrity. No matter what has happened through the years, no matter what's happened with the city, no matter what service you have done, you have done it with integrity. And I just personally wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to thank you for all you do. There's a small group that you've supported away, which is the Jewish community. As you know, my wife is Rabbi Sandy. And we really appreciate you all the time, and we've let you know that. But again, if nothing else, you stand for integrity. Thank you.
Rabbi Sandy is a real hoot. Come back, Bob. Tell Sandy I said she's a real hoot. Well, you're a real hoot.
All right, thank you. Again, next, we have Visit Temecula Valley. Welcome.
Thank you. Hey, Mary Ann.
Hi.
So in sincere recognition of your exceptional dedication and remarkable service to the city of Temecula, Visit Temecula Valley wouldn't be here if it wasn't for your service. We know you had a part in that, and it's really helped thrive. And so we appreciate that. And we'd like to recognize your 20-plus years of service and thank you for all that you've done and that you will continue to do.
Aw, thank you. Visit Temecula Valley has really, in joining with the Chamber of Commerce, transformed Temecula as a tourist destination. And not just for one night or two nights, but now Temecula is the place to go. They even helped get our name on all of the maps, like the weather maps for all of the TV stations coming out of LA. And that's huge because it's constant exposure. So they have just been remarkable. And we're looking at, what, a billion? How much tourist dollars now? A billion? Yeah, annually. So thank you for all that you've done. It's really remarkable.
We have somebody that'd like to say something.
Oh, coming up. Okay. Hey, Bill.
Yeah, you'll be next. All right, thank you. And next, we have Temecula Valley Wine Growers Association.
Might as well just stay here. How are you?
Good.
Well, on behalf of all the wine growers out here, when I came out here, I was the 14th winery. Now there's 54 of us. And when I first came and was introduced to you, it was at one function that you were singing the National Anthem.
I do sing other things, by the way.
Well, I know. But here's a story. When a newcomer comes out here, and they have somebody from the city or from some dignitary singing the National Anthem, it usually is not so good. So I'm sitting here going, oh, God, we are in Temecula, Podunkville. Here we are. This is circa 1997, '08. And all of a sudden, this little girl comes out, this little thing about that big. I'm like, oh, boy, yeah, here we go. And all of a sudden, it was like, oh, my God, what a voice. And what a dynamo person you are. That voice resonates from a big old heart, and we love you so much. On behalf of all my wine growers, thank you.
Aw, thank you. And everybody fared well through the storm? Yes, no?
Oh, yeah. I got a good meme that in a Southern California storm, oh, okay, we're good now.
Yeah.
Everybody stayed home.
Yeah.
It was a ghost town out there on a Sunday afternoon.
Well, we didn't, we weren't sure. We weren't sure.
It was a ghost town.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have... Hang on to that one, Mary Ann. That's valuable. Okay, next up, we have California State University San Marcos. Good evening.
Did you bring jewelry?
I think so. So, Madam Mayor, first of all, I want to thank the council for giving us an opportunity to speak this evening. I am glad they recognized that California State University San Marcos really loved to be here to honor you. And, you know, you're one of the first people I met when I moved here two and a half years ago. On behalf of President Neufeld and Cal State San Marcos, we would like to thank you not just for your public service, but for your dedication to higher education in the city. The city has been supportive. You have been a champion of our presence here for the last 15 years. Through this partnership between the city and Cal State San Marcos, we have graduated over 1,300 people right here in Temecula. We are devoted to continuing to fulfill your vision for higher ed here. We are doubling down on our efforts in our expansion here. And we'd like to present you with this challenge coin. So Cal State San Marcos presents these challenge coins every fall semester to the first-year class as an encouragement to remind them of their dream and of their dreams and to help them fulfill what they came to San Marcos to do. And so we're hoping that for you, the next chapter will be far in excess of the previous chapter. And so we really do appreciate you, and thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Aw, thank you. That's so nice.
Thank you so much.
You know, I was on the foundation board for, what, eight years, nine years? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is going to go with my challenge points. I have more points.
Yeah, maybe it will jewelry someday. earrings perhaps. Take good care.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have a video from Mount San Jacinto and Dr. Roger Schultz.
Hi, I'm Dr. Roger Schultz, the Superintendent President of Mount San Jacinto College. And on behalf of the college and our Board of Trustees, I want to personally express how grateful we are to Mary Ann Edwards for her vision, her leadership, and her action that really enabled Mount San Jacinto College to flourish in Temecula and to really provide a great access to higher education for the community. Her commitment to the service of the community and making it a better place for all is really a testament to her career, whether it was her championing for the hospital to so many other programs in the community, and of course, bringing a full-fledged campus. We always had some partnerships with the city. But to have her be a part of a council that really worked hard on our behalf to bring education into the community, we are honored. And again, I want to salute Mary Ann for her decades of service and making Temecula the great place it is. So again, on behalf of our board, thank you, and personally, thank you for your friendship through the years.
All right, next, we have Old Town Temecula Association and Julie No. Welcome.
Is Julie here?
No.
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 That's a new one. We are so honored to be able to say thank you to you, Mary Ann, for all your years of service and commitment to our community. I know, all my chicken scratch. We are grateful for your leadership along the way with so many of the other councils that you saw in our little old town, Temecula. We know many meetings were had to bring what we see today out there to fruition. So many of us remember when the rugs rolled up and the streets were deserted at 5:00 PM. And today, we have a thriving Old Town thanks to you and your leadership and the leadership of our council. Thank you for bringing City Hall here many years ago and for that vision. It has been a game changer for us, and we appreciate you. As a board, we know you aren't done, and you're not going to stay home, and you're not going to stay down for long. Your heart for public service won't allow it. We look forward to seeing where the next journey takes you. And we are just so blessed to have you as the biggest supporter of Old Town Temecula Association. We have our board here. Thank you.
Good to see you.
We do have this little bag for you with some yummy gifts from Gina.
Aw.
With the bag. Okay. Oh, I know. She does a good job. That is for you.
All right, next up, we have Temecula Valley Hospital.
Is it jewelry? Jerry, you want to come up too?
Here, I'll keep Julie's note. Julie, I have your note.
So I first met Mary Ann in 2011. She reached out to me. I was new to the community, and hospital was breaking ground. And she took me to the Swing Inn.
Of course.
Of course. And she managed, in that first meeting, to rope me into serving on the Board of the Boys and Girls Club. And I told her, I don't have time for that. I got to open this hospital. Well, sure enough, I served for four years on the Board. One of our first disagreements, which I have fond memories of, is she wanted me to change the opening day to the hospital. She had a trip planned. She was going to Hawaii, and she was not going to miss this. Well, we agreed to disagree. I opened the hospital. We had 7,000 people come that day, and she went to Hawaii. So that worked out really well.
And I missed another one, too. I think I missed...
You didn't. You didn't miss anything else after that. You were there for this hospital since the very beginning. And even before I got here, I know it was very controversial to have a hospital. Who wouldn't want a hospital? But there was issues, but we got there. And so she was there for our next opening, our next expansion. You were there with the gold shovel, digging the dirt as we added on in 2018. You were there for the Veterans Day, singing more than the National Anthem. You sang each of the stanzas for each of the divisions of the military at our event, recognizing the volunteers and physicians and employees that are veterans at the hospital. And you were, most importantly, there to recognize the heroes during COVID. We really appreciate that. And you did a dedication of a holiday, recognizing the hospital for a Heroes' Day during the COVID pandemic. So thank you so much for all that you've done and for your friendship.
While you're at the mic, just, what was the last, the most recent series of awards? Just rattle it off.
Rattle it off. U.S. News &amp; World Report, top five in the country. It's amazing. It's a great hospital. So wonderful.
And we're very, very fortunate.
So on behalf of the governing board, and some of the members are here with me today, Dennis Frank and Jerry Konzer, thank you very much for all your service and help.
Are you coming up? Oh, I know Dennis has, Dennis, oh, man. Okay, go ahead. This is all your fault.
It's all my fault. I've known Mary Ann...
I've known Mary Ann for well over 30 years. So, I had to write some notes down because 30 years, I'm my age, I forget things. No, in the very early 90s, as Executive Director of the newly-created Temecula Valley Economic Development Corporation, we hired Mary Ann as the Administrator in a small building across the street from the old City Hall.
On an earthquake fault.
On an earthquake fault. Mary Ann was creative, she was technologically advanced, and contributed at EDC, winning at least six awards, national awards, for economic development when you were at the EDC, while you were constantly learning to do things and providing creative ideas. Most importantly, Mary Ann, though, you remained passionate about Temecula. I emphasize passionate. Its schools, the city's development and growth, and its residents. You were especially caring about all the residents there. She also maintained a regional focus, as you see, Remedify and all the others, she's been very regionally focused. As Mary Ann has said, and I have to quote what she said about original employment with EDC, "It's my first pseudo-government job that taught me everything about city processes and government chains of commands." And because we were right across the street from the City Hall, you were going over to the City Hall every day, then back. And you didn't even get run over, run in, across the street.
No, you didn't.
So, that was a big positive. Mary Ann, your caring and passion for Temecula has provided over 30 years of community leadership. 20 years to the city, four times as mayor. Before that, as a master school board member. You went and you studied to do the master's portion of the school board, far beyond a normal school board requirement and other Southwest California regional entities. Not only is she an elected official, but as a mother, and I've had the great opportunity to meet her three children over a period of time, as a private citizen committed to the community and all things related to that. Rotary, Murieta, Temecula Group now knows MTG Assistance League. And I could go on and on, but that can't be... So, as a little aside, Mary Ann, and I think Jeff Stone mentioned about your singing. For being the singing voice for Disneyland's The Small World, you could do that for us now, but I think it's appropriate. To four-time mayor and a school board member, what a great journey. Thank you so much for all you've done for this community. It's been wonderful working with you.
It's your fault.
It was actually Dennis who introduced me to the city and government and how government functions. That's why I keep saying it's all your fault.
That's all right. It turned out positive. Thank you, Mary Ann.
And thank you, Jerry.
Get a picture. Tom was gonna give you a hug. You rebuffed his hug.
We hugged already?
So, as Dennis is taking his seat, I will tell you that when we learned that we had received those awards from the National Advertising Association, which was stationed in the center of the country in Nebraska, Dennis was literally on my desk, dancing.
All right, next up is Dr. Larry Boglin. Welcome.
Well, I am honored to be here and humbled to have been invited to speak at this wonderful event. You're beautiful. As a 36-year resident of the area, I've been honored to know many city officials personally, get my hair cut at Stu's and get compound pharmaceuticals from Jeff's and go to back-to-school night with Aaron. And I don't know how you guys live a political life because, you know, I'm, as a hospice doctor, people say, "How do you do that? How can you possibly handle that?" Well, I don't know how politicians and officials, city officials, do what they do because they are the brunt of slings and arrows from the public and I could never do that personally. But speaking of arrows, Mary Ann was a patient of mine before I became a hospice doctor, regular family practice. And as a new patient, I looked over her chart before I walked into the room and it said she was having a splitting headache. So, I thought, well, went through the, you know, the list of things it could possibly be. And when I got in the room, Mary Ann was demonstrating where her headache came from.
We'd never met before. This was the first time we had met.
And this is what she had on her head. I won't ask you to model it because I don't want to mess your hair up.
Thank you.
But I am honored to present you with this as a memento of our relationship, the fact that I could actually diagnose the cause of your headache. And I appreciate our friendship over the years and the culture that you have brought to our city of volunteerism, of commitment, of family, of friendliness, openness to outsiders. I could go on and on, but you have been a wonderful light for our city and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. No, I'm keeping it. I may have, I may have a new doctor someday, I have to keep it. And Larry, you thought the turkeys were funny.
Well, I was gonna say it takes one to know.
Yes.
We're so tall.
And thank you for your sharing.
Hey, next up from DCH Automotive is Al Rubio.
Is it a new car? It's a new car!
I was gonna say it at the end, so I'll just say it now. We had a new car for you, but I couldn't get in because I didn't have a parking pass. So, whoever is in charge of parking passes, it's your fault that Mary Ann doesn't get a new car. We even had 32 little coupons, payment coupons with it to give you.
Oh, Aaron.
Great to see you.
I have my rotary pin on too.
And you got your rotary pin on. Mary Ann, what can I say? I'm representing the private sector tonight.
Okay.
Chamber member, member of the community. As you know, DCH Auto Group was formerly Norm Reeves Super Group. And Mrs. Reeves was a friend of yours.
Yes.
And she started business here back in the late 70s. Well, I came to work for the group in the late 90s and we were part of DC...
It's off, right?
I can talk loud, how's that?
No, not for television.
We want the television audience to hear.
You have a huge audience watching you right now.
Gotcha.
Well, I'm gonna start over.
Still not on.
Here.
Here. Okay, so, in 19... I'm sorry, in 2003, unfortunately, Mrs. Reeves passed away. You came to her memorial at the dealership, thank you so much. And then, we were purchased by the DCH Auto Group in 2004. You had the pleasure of meeting our CEO, Susan Scaroa, who still to this day asks for you, she's retired. So, I get a call, fast forward, couple of years or so, I get a call from Alice Sullivan with the Chamber and she says, "Al, Mary Ann, Mayor Mary Ann wants to come to the dealership and just have a little meeting, a little meet and greet with you guys. Can you get some of the guys together?" And I said, "Yeah, absolutely." So, one of the, Ken Coulson, the general manager, said, "You know, Susan Scaroa's gonna be in town? Is there any way that Mary Ann can come next week?" And I said, "Well, why don't we have her meet Susan Scaroa?" So, we meet in the conference room and the first thing that Mary Ann says to Susan Scaroa is, "Why did you change the name to DCH? Did you know that Norm Reeves is a cherished name here in town?" And I'm sitting there, actually under the table, I was going, "Yes." So, she said, "Well, that's what we decided to do" and it happened.
And we were great friends.
Yes, yeah, it worked out that way. But the real reason that Mary Ann wanted to get together and have a meet and greet was she wanted to thank all the auto dealers and we just happened to be the first one for being the biggest tax, sales tax contributor to the town. That was just really awesome that you did that. And after you left, she came up to me and she says, "I do dealer visits in New Jersey, in New York, Northern California, and no one has ever thanked us for contributing to their tax base. So, thank you so much for that. Thank you so much, you, we really appreciated it." Another thing that you did is you got back at Susan for changing the name because you said, "We changed the name of the loop down at Inez to DLR Drive." So, there you go. What does DLR stand for?
Well, it stands for dealer, really, for car dealers, but it's also Donna Reeves initials, DLR.
Donna Al Reeves.
That was pretty cool.
Yeah, that was pretty cool. And Mary Ann was very instrumental in getting that changed. I remember going to the council meeting and you handed Dick Kennedy the proclamation saying that the street would be from now on, DLR. So, thank you so much for that. Thanks for everything you do. Love you to death. And we've got a lot of affiliations, Rotary, Student of the Month, Boys and Girls Club, Chamber of Commerce, and on and on, CTE, and on and on and on. Thank you so much, Mary Ann, from the bottom of our heart, we love you.
Thank you. There's a groan on her ear, I don't know.
Come on, you guys know me, I never put the mic down.
Thank you. Okay, next up from Paradise Chevrolet, we have Becky Young. Welcome.
All right.
I love flowers.
Me too. All right, well, on behalf of Terry Gilmore, the owner of Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac, he's out of town today. He's in Michigan, actually. So, this first part is from him. "Mary Ann, I sincerely wish I could be here tonight to recognize you and share this important and special event with you. Unfortunately, I'm in Michigan, so I wanted to send my heartfelt congratulations for a job well done in this community. I met Mary Ann in 1992 when she invited me to the Assistance League's offices to share the vision and the values of the organization. She was giving me a tour and sharing with me Operation School Bell when we ran into a mom and her two kids who are being fitted with new clothes, shoes, backpacks, and school supplies. What a life-changing moment for me. Mary Ann's dedication as a volunteer and a president throughout the years, along with the entire volunteer family of the Assistance League, have changed thousands of families' lives. Mary Ann, your dedication to serving has never been part-time. In anything from school boards to city council, you've given your time and have made a major difference in our community. Most residents here have been here less than 20 years, are not aware of the sacrifices and time our community leaders have given to the city of Temecula, but I want to recognize your efforts tonight. Congratulations, Mary Ann, you've made a difference and thank you for 30 years of invaluable service to the city of Temecula. Now, as my part, Mary Ann, from my personal heart, you've been an amazing example, mentor and leader. You've always shown myself and others how to be a leader with class. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to honor you. Now, as you all know, I'm a car salesman and I'm not afraid to ask for anything. So, Mary Ann, we want you to sing.
All right. This one's on, okay. So, everybody stand up. You gotta stand up, you gotta help me. I didn't know you were gonna do that.
Well, everybody's been asking.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, you ready? [Singing] God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans, white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless Temecula, our home sweet home. I didn't even warm up. No warm-up, no nothing. Let's get a picture. These are beautiful.
I don't know where the picture girls at.
Will you take one so, for the scrap?
Oh, there she is.
There she is. Oh, she has a lens.
All right. Next up, we have Animal Friends of the Valley.
You can tell the story of the...
Good evening.
Okay, real quick, I've known Mary Ann for over 30 years, so I could be up here forever on great stories. But in lieu of timeframe, I wrote something down. So, this is just from my thoughts. "Mary Ann, my friend and mentor, holds a deep dedication to the city of Temecula. She has devoted years of service to this city, whether it was back in the day with the tractor races, the rod runs, or opening her home for the Temecula Valley Women's Club Home Tour. Just on a side note, if you've ever been to Mary Ann's house during the holidays, you would think you were at Disneyland. She has every red and green and white bow and ribbon in the house with all the Santa Clauses and everything so decked out is beautiful. She has been devoted to each of us, especially children and veterans and other nonprofits. She was one of the founding members of Animal Friends of the Valleys and was vital in helping us build the shelter. I have known Mary Ann for over 30 years before Temecula was the city. I worked with her on the first EDC, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Southwest County and various community events. She is an exceptional leader, friend, mother, wife, grandmother, and community leader. She is an excellent city leader who is strong, but has an open heart, high integrity, and a detailed problem solver. These traits have served her well as being our mayor and city council. You are strong, but you can laugh at yourself and with others. She has given years of service through her time and exceptional talents. Thank you for your great work for the city of Temecula and all of its community members. You are a true friend and your legacy at the city will live on forever. Thank you, sister. And it's not goodbye, but thank you."
Do you want to say a little thank?
And Ms. Edwards, I'm here for a different reason. Now that you have all this time on your hands, we have openings at the shelter, please. Including animal control.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But again, I want to thank you for your service. You were the first council member that I've ever met in my life. It was a long time ago and I thought I was shaking the hand of Mrs. President at the time. So, anyway, you have been a mentor to me and we thank you so much for your support at AFV.
And thank you for everything AFV does. I mean, we couldn't do it without you, really, they do an amazing job.
And our gift is a little puppy in the car. Yeah, anytime you want one.
This is where we suck in our gut.
Put the paper out.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have Michelle's Place Cancer Resource Center. Good evening.
So, Mary Ann, we just want to thank you so much. You, obviously, from everyone in the room, you support everything and everyone, whatever it is in our community to make it great. But personally, from Michelle's Place, our executive board, our founders, Bill and Marilyn Watson, and all the cancer patients that we have served in the Temecula Valley and in our entire community, thank you so much for supporting. But also, I just want a memory, as I was sitting here many, many years ago, when I was a... was a brand-new nonprofit leader, it was very overwhelming to stand in this space and talk to the council. And every single time, that smiling face is looking right at me and nodding in support. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for making me feel comfortable and welcomed and supported all the time.
There was a time she wasn't comfortable. I can't believe that. So before we take the picture, let me just share a little bit about Michelle's Place and what's taken, what happened a couple of years ago. So, Michelle's Place was, you know, a loving gift that was born out of tragedy when your daughter passed away from breast cancer. And your passion in starting Michelle's Place has really changed the pathway for so many cancer patients, their families, survivors. So, a couple of years ago, we had a cancer task force. We established a cancer task force because we wanted to know why so many people feel it's necessary to leave Temecula to get good cancer care. You know, they go to UCLA or they go to Scripps. And so, we spent, you know, a couple of years, actually, and Betsy was instrumental in helping with the final report and putting all of those meetings together. And we had great representation from hospitals from all over the region, including San Diego. And you were, you played an integral role in that effort. Well, we came up to the end of the task force. We put together a resource guide, which is remarkable. Betsy did an outstanding job. And Michelle's Place stepped up and said, "We've taken care of breast cancer patients all these years, but now we'd like to expand our services to include all cancer patients and their families." And that is a huge, you know, that's a huge increase in services. And so, immediately, they went out, they found a bigger space. It was as if it didn't take any work at all. You made it seem so easy. And the city supported that effort. And so, now, how many thousands of cancer patients, survivors, their families, you've taken care of, to give them, give them that resource? You know, those are probably the scariest words anyone can hear, as we heard in 2020 when our daughter, Casey, was diagnosed with stage three colon cancer at the age of 34. And she's fine. I'm happy to report that just, what, Tom, was it last Friday? Last Friday, she had her three-year screening, colonoscopy, clear, doing great. She's, you know, wonderful. And of course, you were the first person to come to me when you found out that that was taking place. So, out of your tragedy, look at the difference. You know, you've changed lives, so many thousands of lives. And so, thank you so much to Michelle's Place for all they have done for our community.
All right, thank you. And next, we have Oak Grove Center and Tammy Wilson. Welcome.
Mary Ann, we're just so thankful for your leadership, and not only in the nonprofit community, but the faith community and special needs and at-risk kids. And those haven't only been the children at Oak Grove, but kids that have challenges throughout the community. So, we're grateful. I learned a lot from you, and starting in Rotary, because I was a very new Rotarian. And I have to say that you and Supervisor Washington were such cut-ups. I think he isn't here at the moment, but y'all were so funny. And very few of the presidents could ever set very good limits on you. So, for y'all to know, they were just a force because they, you know, Mary Ann's super smart, very witty, but boy, her and Chuck would get going, and it was just uncontrollable laughter.
You didn't let us sit together after a while.
They got wise to you two, but you guys made it so much fun. And the other thing, that a couple of very special memories had to be the year that you did your State of the City and appeared as Mary Poppins. That just, nobody could ever, you know, top that. It was wonderful. But my very special favorite memory was three years of doing Gospel Fest, and I miss that. Mary Ann was one of the mighty women of gospel, and boy, this young soprano could belt it out like nobody's business. So, we have to, we have to go back to that. It was, it was very wonderful and really, really special. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for being a mentor to so many, for the grace and grit that you have. And I think I've learned a lot because you can go into some pretty tense situations and either diffuse it or have people laughing. So, God bless you, lady. You're just amazing.
So, since we're doing commercials, really quick, Oak Grove serves children that nobody else can help. And they serve, live in, you have people living on it, as a full-time school with troubled youth. And if it were not for Oak Grove, these kids would be falling through the cracks everywhere. So, thank you, Tammy and Oak Grove. How big is it now?
Seventy-six kids can live there, and then wraparound programs, a couple hundred and seventy-five coming in for school, and then campus in Paris. And Mary Ann's always good about saying, "What have you thought about? What have you thought about?" And then I know a good idea is coming.
I still have that granted I want to talk to you about.
Yeah, I know. See what I mean? And don't be fooled, she's not gonna retire. Can't wait. We need your help.
All right. Next up, we have the Rotary Club of Temecula. Just use the podium mic.
Mary Ann, from the Rotary Club of Temecula, we appreciate your time and talent you've given to this wonderful city. Temecula is a beautiful, park-filled, fiscally-fit community, in part, thanks to your input. And we appreciate, we thank you, we wish you the best, and we're excited to see you at the Rotary Club of Temecula's meetings on Wednesdays at the Mount San Jacinto College, third floor conference room.
But not tomorrow.
First and third Wednesday, first, second, and third Wednesday of the month. And with that, I do not have a certificate, but I do have a key to a house in Temecula. Thank you very much.
Now, you just have to find it.
In another 20 years, they'll tell me the address, right? Do you need this to get home, to get back in?
I can tell you, but I have to take the ring off.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Susan Miyamoto and Kathleen Hamilton from Miyamoto Music and SOS Hills, Save Our Southwest Hills.
Well, Mary Ann, you have always had the ability to say the right thing at the right time, but you do it so eloquently and so articulately. It's a joy to listen. Not only do you say the right thing at the right time, but you always seem to be at the right place at the right time. Remember when Save Our Southwest Hills first walk-in rally? You didn't just lead the band and the hundreds of folks, but you did it so well, with such charisma and joy. You were fantastic. You were.
Yeah, we had a picture of that.
Me too.
One of the positive things that came out of Liberty Quarry was being able to meet you and, and work with you. That was, you know, such a pleasure for all of us. And my favorite, one of my fondest memories of you is our first SOS Hills fundraiser was at the brand-new Old Town Temecula Theater, and you opened the show with "The Hills Are Alive," Sound of Music. And you, you stole the show. So, we really appreciate everything you've done.
And if it weren't for the grassroots effort of these ladies and Save Our Southwest Hills and Pachanga, we would have a huge quarry right on top of what I call Rocky Hill, right at the south end of town. Yeah, so, so thank you. I mean, Temecula was saved because of your efforts and Pachangas.
You were wonderful.
Just imagine how long this would be if I'd been here 30 or 40 years.
All right. Next, we have a video that we received from Sally Myers, who's part of BMW Management, Sizzler Restaurants, Richie's Diner, and Student of the Month. Roll the video.
A warm hello, Mary Ann, from your special friend, Sally Myers. Greetings from Lake Tahoe, near the Rubicon Jeep Trail. Well, Gary and I are gonna go wheeling in a few minutes, and as you can see, I've got my Temecula swag on today. I would never miss an opportunity to say thank you and tell you how much Gary and I appreciate your heart of service. We've lived in Temecula and a Sizzler franchisee since 1983, celebrating 40 years. Mary Ann, you and I have enjoyed a special friendship since the time you and Tom moved to Temecula 33 years ago. We first met at church as you shared your beautiful voice in worship and praise to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We'd broken bread together at our Sizzler restaurant, volunteered together at the annual crosswalk on Good Friday, participated in Temecula's awesome July 4th parade, and as Temecula Mayor and Councilwoman, you supported and attended the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce High School Student of the Month Scholarship and Recognition Breakfast, the nonprofit that I founded over 33 years ago. And one noteworthy and very fun point of interest, we live in the same house. Now, have fun explaining that tonight. My admiration and appreciation for your commitment to God, family, country, and community makes your legacy one that we will always remember, not because you're perfect or that I agreed with every decision you made, but because you conducted yourself in a manner worthy of respect, did your research, cared for our community, and listened to the people's voice. I believe that God has used your many gifts and talents in our city, county, and state for such a time as this. He has started a new chapter in your life where He will use you for great purpose, and those blessings will inspire others as you seek God's plan. As a citizen of Temecula, our family and business reap the fruits of your leadership. Our city honors law and order, respects its first responders, fiscal responsibility, provides a safe, welcoming, intimate home for our families to live, grow, learn, and raise up responsible, moral, contributing children. It provides opportunities for business to prosper while being a beacon of light to other cities for standing firm and holding fast to attributes of personal responsibility, character, and a culture that serves others. That is how a city and its people prosper. Mary Ann, thank you for blessing the city of Temecula. This is my prayer for you and our city. Philippians 4:8. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellent or praiseworthy, let your mind dwell on these things. May God richly bless you and our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. We appreciate that. And next, we have from Rancho Christian Church, Pastor Scott Tredway has also submitted a video.
Hey, Mary Ann and friends, this is Scott Tredway. I'm gonna be running behind tonight. I'm in class, but I will be there a little bit late. Mary Ann, you probably don't know what that feels like to be running a little behind, but anyway, I will be there. But I had to submit this video because I just wanted to say how much I appreciate you and love you and admire you. Your service to the city has been incredible. I mean, really, what, 20 years of service to the city, just selflessly giving your best to build a fantastic place that people call home and that people work in. And you have amazing partners with your other city council people, as well as this incredible city staff and community leaders, business leaders, nonprofit leaders. I mean, what you have done in partnership with leaders of the city to build something truly special is fantastic. On a personal note, just thank you for blessing Rancho Church. Your voice has just been an amazing contribution over the years, singing at Rancho and just everybody enjoying that so much. You have, you sang the national anthem at our football games. You have spoken our commencement address for high school graduation. You and the city have partnered so wonderfully together and allowed us to participate as Community Mission of Hope in Rancho de la Cidus to help people in need, and that has been powerful and profound. But besides all that, we're friends, and, and we've been neighbors for a very long time, for years together. You are a next-door neighbor, and you were so gracious when we would regularly throw our trash in your yard and when our dogs would attack Tom. You were just kind about that. Actually, that did not happen, but we have developed a friendship and, and being neighbors together. And it's just been fun to, to serve alongside of you and get to know you and your family over so many, many years. And there will be many years to come, right? And we're gonna keep enjoying that partnership and that friendship, and just thank you so much. And I hope you thoroughly enjoy tonight as you are celebrated with friends and family, and we love you.
All right. Okay, then we have two letters that were submitted that I'm gonna go ahead and read. So, I'll go ahead and read. This first letter is from a longtime resident and someone that, Mary Ann, you've known and knows, has known you for quite some time. It's from Jeff Pack. "For those of us fortunate enough to have landed on and created a home and life here in Temecula, we can count the number of people who are directly responsible for the quality of life we enjoy here as likely less than a few hundred. Mary Ann Edwards, without a doubt, would be near the top of that list. For as long as I can remember, Mary Ann has faithfully and competently guided first a school district and then a city through the ups and downs of local governance, and she's done so with dignity, grace, sweetness, and always with love in her heart. Whether it's lending her voice to many local celebrations of our nation or standing firm on her beliefs in serving the whole and entirety of the city of Temecula's residents, Mary Ann Edwards remains steadfast in her commitment to all of us in this room and is undeniable success of this city, and she still does that today. Ask anyone who runs into her in her favorite grocery store, has breakfast with her at the Swing Inn, or gets a 10-paragraph text from her after a city council meeting these days. A fire, a fire of her commitment towards the city has not calmed one bit. It rages still and likely will be as long as she chooses to share it with us. I met Mary Ann during my time as a journalist, and that's not to say we were best friends back then. I could push a button or two, and Mary Ann would bristle at the wild insinuations I would make, pressing for a slip-up from the then-mayor, but she never did, nor did she hold it against me. Though maybe we did not agree on everything, I learned then and that there, and there that Mary Ann Edwards has integrity and would always admire her for that. Say what you want about Mary Ann Edwards, I would say, but she loves this city and believes in the direction she is helping it take it. Right or wrong in my eyes, you have to respect it. And really, that's where we're here tonight, because we respect Mary Ann Edwards. We respect her for what she's done, continues to do, and will continue to do for this city. And when you drill down on it, ultimately, what she has done for each and every one that calls Temecula home, like I do. I wish I could be there tonight to see her fight back tears and watch Tom beam with pride in his bride, but she deserves this more than most. Thank you, Mary Ann." And that's from Jeff Pack. And the second letter is from Leah DiBernardo, owner of Eat. So, it says, "Dear community members, today we gather here at City Hall to celebrate and honor a truly remarkable leader, Mary Ann Edwards. Her unwavering commitment to equality and equity for all people, regardless of color or gender, has left an indelible mark in our community. As we reflect on her numerous achievements and contributions, we are reminded of the transformative power of inclusive leadership. Mary Ann Edwards has served our community with distinction, holding various elected and appointed offices throughout her career. Her tenure as mayor of Temecula in 2009, 2014, and 2017 have been marked by a steadfast dedication to the principles of fairness and justice for all her constituents. As a city council member and board member of the Temecula Valley Unified School District, she has tirelessly advocated for the rights and well-being of all residents, ensuring that their voices are heard and their needs are met. Beyond her roles in local government, Mary Ann Edwards has been a driving force in the numerous..." numerous charitable organizations. As a lifetime member of the VFW Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary, she has shown unwavering support for our brave servicemen and women. Her founding directorship of SAFE, Safe Alternatives for Everyone, and the Rose Again Foundation has provided vital resources and support to foster youth, empowering them to overcome adversity and thrive. Additionally, her involvement with the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation and the Assistance League of Temecula Valley demonstrates her commitment to improving the lives of those affected by illness and hardship. Mary Ann Edwards' leadership extends beyond the boundaries of our community as she has actively participated in various steering committees and initiatives. Her contributions to the Old Town Renovation Committee, Ronald H. Roberts Public Library Committee, and the Myriad Creek Restoration and Flood Control Committee have played a pivotal role in shaping the future of our city. Furthermore, her involvement in the Riverside County Integrated Plan and her advocacy for the Yes on Sea and Yes on Est campaigns has demonstrated her unwavering commitment to the betterment of our region. Throughout her illustrious career, Mary Ann Edwards has recognized and honored for her outstanding contributions, being named Woman of the Year in the Seventy-Fifth State Assembly District, Woman of Merit by the San Diego Union Tribune, The Californian, and the Citizen of the Year by the Temecula Valley Kiwanis, are testaments to her exceptional leadership and dedication to public service. Her honorary service award for the California State PTA further highlights her commitment to education and the well-being of our youth. For over two decades, she has been a beacon of inspiration and a true role model for all of us. Her dedication to public service has not only transformed our community but has also uplifted countless young women from local high schools, providing them with invaluable career opportunities. My favorite and most commendable accomplishments in her tireless efforts in gathering professional women to mentor and guide young high school women, through her initiatives, she's created a platform for these aspiring young women to connect with successful professionals, enabling them to learn, grow, and thrive in their chosen fields. By fostering these relationships, Mary Ann has empowered our future leaders and paved the way for a more inclusive and diverse workforce. In conclusion, Mayor Mary Ann Edwards is a true champion of equality and equity. Her tireless efforts to uplift all members of our community, regardless of color or gender, have made a lasting impact on the lives of countless individuals. We are fortunate to have such an exceptional leader among us, one who embodies the values of fairness, justice, and compassion. Let us come together today to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for Mayor Edwards' unwavering commitment to our community. May her legacy continue to inspire us all to strive for a more inclusive and equitable society. With gratitude for this amazing woman, Leah DiBernardo. All right, and next, we'll have a video from the Promenade Mall and Jeff Kurtz.
Good evening, Mary Ann. I'm so sorry I can't be there in person tonight at the city council meeting, but I wanted to just share a quick video, just thank you for all that you've done for us over the years. I consider you a true friend and appreciate all your help and being our emcee for so many years here at Promenade, to make that for our Santa's arrival, the things we've worked with together as we did the expansion and renovation at the mall. It's just, it's been a long time, a lot of things that we've done, working with you Boys and Girls Club. You've just been amazing, an amazing friend, and I want to thank you and congratulate you for all you've done and all you've accomplished, and I look forward to seeing you accomplish even more things in the future because knowing you, I know this is not the end of anything, but the beginning of many things. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get into some city of Temecula, former city of Temecula staff. So first off, former assistant, former city manager Sean Nelson and his wife Stephanie Nelson.
I didn't see you back there.
Yes. Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to honor Mary Ann, and I was thinking about what it, what it actually took to build our city, and it was really built with love and dedication and perseverance and hard work. And when I think back on Mary Ann, those are the things that, that she emulated in everything that she did, and I think it was mostly driven by love. And when, when Stephanie and I got here, we got here October of 1990, and Tom was on the Community Services Commission, Mary Ann was active with the Assistance League, and then, I forgot about the EDC, and then she, she was on the Public Traffic Safety Commission, and then the school district, and then, of course, city council for seventeen years. And during that time, she was also the executive director for the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, when you think about all of what she accomplished, it's just very phenomenal, and it was a pleasure to have worked with you and to have done all the things that we were able to do together. And I wanted to kind of close with a poem that was written by Jacob. When he was in the fifth grade, he was ten years old, and it was entitled "Hills." Life is like grassy hills, changing color in the fall. Climbing hill after hill, wondering what's on the other side. Sometimes falling, but always climbing back to the top. Some hills are larger than others and take more to overcome. One day you'll come to flat plains where you, where there are no more hills to climb. You've achieved what you wanted, and now it's time to rest. God bless you, Mary Ann, and we wish you all the best in your retirement.
All right, next, we have former assistant city manager Greg Butler. Welcome, Greg.
Greg Butler.
I wouldn't miss it. I wouldn't miss it. Everyone said just about everything I wanted to say, so I'm just going to tell a couple of funny stories. I came to work here on my wife's birthday, 1999, May 3rd. I'll remember that was a month after my daughter was born. I was sitting in an office next to the then-public works director, Bill Hughes, and outside of his office was Anita Pyle, longtime admin for Public Works. You came scurrying in like you always do, and I'm like, who is this? What is going on here? I had no idea what the Public Traffic Safety Commission was. I had no idea what a lot of the council members, I was just here to build bridges, build buildings, build roads. She came in here and she started grilling Bill about something on the agenda for the Public Traffic Safety Commission, so I just stayed back in my office and I wasn't going to get involved with any of this. It was all over with, you got the answers you were looking for, and you went on your way. I snuck out of the office and I go, who was that? And they're like, oh, that's Mary Ann Edwards, she's one of our public traffic centers. We like her. Over the years, I come to find out why. You were personable, you were concerned, you were prepared. That's why you came in. I experienced that as my career flourished here in Temecula, working my way up into city manager's office. You had always come in, you were always supportive of staff, and that's kind of what I wanted to share with you was, me, I know Aaron will recognize it, everyone sitting up here will recognize it, you supported us, supporting you guys. We're here to make everyone sitting up there look good, and our job is to get you the answers, solve your problems if possible, and help you engage with the community. So I just wanted to say thank you for supporting staff. Nope, we're back for good.
So I can only say that we have the best city staff anywhere. I mean, it's absolutely true, and they work together like a well-oiled machine. They are never at a loss for new ideas or new ways to solve problems, and they like each other, and that is very, very important, and that's one of the things that has made Temecula so successful, is the way we've had fantastic leadership, Sean, Aaron, these guys, and that's what makes Temecula great. And then you have wonderful citizens, and it's the best of all combinations, and so thank you for your service. And you're retired now?
Yeah.
Wow. Now I know what all you people do when you're retired.
All right, next, we have a video from former assistant city manager Grant Yates. I understand the audio might be a little hard to hear, but I want to at least try to play it.
Hi, Mary Ann. Grant Yates here. I want to thank you for all of the dedicated years of service and all the hard work you did to make the city of Temecula a great city. I want to briefly just go down memory lane on a couple of projects. The first one was a project that nobody really wanted to deal with at the time, and it was a project that was so important for our region's public safety, and I'm talking about the regional animal shelter, where you were instrumental in pulling together all the cities, the county, and nonprofit, and working through some complicated construction and financing issues and actually getting that facility up and running. And so that was a great success for all the work you did there, much appreciated. The other project that I wanted to talk about was your work on RCA. I know that as a council member, you serve on a lot of different regional boards and commissions, and sometimes citizens don't really understand how important that work is. And with the RCA, I know Temecula had some issues, but also many other agencies in the county had bigger issues. And when I went up to Lake Elsinore, I know I relied heavily upon you to help us get through a lot of complicated issues with the RCA, and I know the developing community and the other cities also relied on you. So for those just couple of projects, I just wanted to say thank you. I wish you and Tom and your family nothing but the best in the future, and take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grant. All right, we did have a space set up here for Riverside Sheriff Captain Mark Regali, but unfortunately, he's not going to be able to make it tonight, but he wants to let you know how much he appreciates you and sends his regards, so just want to let you know that. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the city of Temecula city manager, Aaron Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I go, I see Letitia Plummer is in the audience, and if you would indulge us, she is the very important and founder of the Assistance League, and I think she would have a few things to say to Mary Ann Edwards, and then I'll follow her. Thank you.
Absolutely. Welcome. Figure if we could have a full-on town hall, Mary Ann, we'll never leave.
Oh, my. Mary Ann, I'm here on behalf of Assistance League of Temecula, I'm here on behalf of Assistance League of Temecula Valley, and it's my pleasure to have known Mary Ann since pretty much our start, which was 1989. And I think, Mary Ann, you joined us, what, in ninety-two?
Ninety-two.
In ninety-two, and proceeded to become one of our most outstanding presidents, and of course, an advocate for all things good towards the community, an advocate for our Operation School Bill program, which, as you've heard many times, what we do is we close children in southwest Riverside County.
How many last year?
About twenty-three hundred. We have a lot of support from the city and mainly attributed to Mary Ann, but also the city council, Aaron, everybody here. And you've always represented, and you have a story, because you always said the reason you were so good, what, you can say that, because you say it much better than I do. How, remember that story?
Yes.
Everything that she became, she attributes to being president of our chapter. So thank you, Mary Ann, for everything you've done, your representation, and, oh, by the way, she's on our national board, just why I, so, anyway, thank you, Mary Ann. Well-deserved, and I know there's many more things to come from you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. City Manager.
All right. Mary Ann, when we first met in 1995, I certainly didn't need glasses to read my notes, but here I find myself today. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to speak on behalf of all the current city staff, and so I put together some thoughts here, and I'm, I'm just going to run through them. But simply put, Mary Ann, I wanted to say thank you for giving over two decades to this city in various capacities and from different vantage points as a city commissioner and as a longstanding city council member and mayor. Like you, I have had the distinct privilege to be on this public service journey with the city of Temecula for some time, and I've enjoyed learning and contributing from different capacities and certainly job positions. But given our journeys together, I wanted to share some observations as I reflect back on your rise and entry into city government. You bring an energy and a pride in your, into our community. You always bring a smile to work. Despite challenges we faced, you manage to also remind us of the good and the positive. Your heart for our city is always, always on display, specifically children and youth programs and things that you have championed. You have never backed down from a last-minute ask to sing the National Anthem. You have demonstrated unwavering support and appreciation for the work of city staff for over twenty years. You've led the city as mayor through our first, and God help us only, global pandemic, which was incredibly, incredibly challenging. You made time for mentoring young people and next-generation leaders through the city's various internships and workforce development programs. You also made it a priority to speak to young ladies and be a role model to demonstrate and encourage women in leadership. And as a father of two daughters, I for one really appreciate the time that you put into that. Your punctuality has always been a topic of conversation. And over the years, myself and others, many times considered, and sometimes we did, tell you that the meeting actually started thirty minutes before it actually was set to start. This was our effort to preempt sort of your delayed entry or hedge. When it became known that I had hired Randy Joel as our city clerk, I'll never forget this, you, you mentioned, as a seated council member, maybe even mayor at the time, you offered to rent a U-Haul and help her move from Northern California to relocate her things to Temecula. I, I think that it shows your heart. I think it shows your heart.
I meant it, too.
It was not uncommon for me to call you over the phone to provide an update or just talk through some things, and many times I found myself on speakerphone, and I could hear the first gentleman, Tom, in the background contributing to the call or to the conversation. And I think you called these the squire calls. So I will forever cherish those moments. It wasn't a conversation between me and you, it was between me, you, and Tom. As a community leader and anyone that has ever spent any time with you or talked with you, you can feel your love of our city. You led with a love of city that was truly appreciated. Your love of the Lord is evident. We have been through way more good times and championships together over the decades, but we have also experienced some very low times and professional and personal tragedies. You were there for me, you walked alongside me, my family, and I will never forget. I have watched you do the same for so many others, many of them are here in the room tonight. Looking back, your support of a twenty-two-year-old intern to the relationship between a council member and a city manager as my boss has been profound, and I cherish so many moments. and I cherish so many moments and so many conversations. Selfishly, I thank you for all your personal and professional support, but I close with a big thank you for all you did for our great city of Temecula for over 21 years. May God bless you and continue. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to give an opportunity to City of Temecula City Attorney, Peter Thorson, if you'd like to say a few words.
Yes. Mary Ann, you are one of the most genuinely enthusiastic, upbeat, perky public officials that we have had the pleasure to work with. You've been a great joy and inspiration to all of us in public service. But you also have this great ability to cut through a lot of very complex legal labor relations and other difficult city problems, and brought a great deal of focus to the council and to the staff to get these problems solved. So thank you very much, and all the best to you and Tom.
All right, now it is time for the current city council to say some words. And I'm just gonna go ahead and start to my right with Councilmember Koffis.
Mary Ann Edwards. I will be like Supervisor Washington and wing it here, but I'll keep it short and sweet. It is an honor to sit in the seat that I am in today because of individuals like yourself. You're an amazing woman. You are an amazing council member, and Temecula is a more beautiful place because of you. Thank you for everything that you've done and continue to do. I wish you the best. Thank you.
Councilmember Jessica Alexander.
Okay. So our first meeting was before I even got on the council, and I had just moved into Temecula within a few months, and met at Mary Ann's favorite store, The Dollar Store, which should really now be called The Dollar and Quarter Store. But I will say this much, that everybody said and touched upon everything except maybe a few things. Number one, your creativity. If there was, the second time that I met you was at the Christmas parade. It was the one with the Santa Claus, and you had all the gnomes on your car, and you were engulfed in gnomes for the entire ride. And you had that for a couple of years. And I just want to say, you know, just the creativity of what you brought, I think also you even brought that into the city. It was a touch only you could bring, and we're very thankful for that. Also, your trunk always seemed to have gifts and creativity or something in there. It was always exploding with something. So we just want to thank you for your creativity and bringing that to the city. And there will be one last thing that I will never forget as long as I live, and that is how you would always call the Temecula Public Financing Authority, the TPAFA, before every meeting. So that will always be forever in my head as I am up here listening to that. And Kevin, I think we laughed a little bit about that, too. So thank you for your time and service, and God bless you.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
All right, Mary Ann. Wow, I have been here since 1991. And so when I got here in 1991, I was a young father, three small kids, starting a new business. So my head was down to the grindstone for the first 15 years. And so when I finally got a moment, the kids were out of the house, I thought, you know, I had people say, "Stu, you should run for city council." And I was like, "All right, I'll do it." And so I threw my hat in the ring, and I was the only one who ran in 2006. That's how happy everybody was with the city of Temecula. So I get to Costco, and I'm buying something at Costco, and out in front, there's this little lady out there. She's campaigning, and it was you. And immediately, I thought, "I'm screwed." So this is pretty much over. But, and you did beat me in 2006. But you know what? For the next 10 years, I was watching. And you are literally the biggest cheerleader of Temecula, you know? And that's what I aspire to be, believe it or not. I kind of modeled myself after you. And to say she knows something about everything is an understatement, because you're never in a meeting with Mary Ann without her saying, "Oh yeah, I remember that. I was the one who thought of that." You know, she literally knew everything about everything. So I appreciated that. You were a big role model for me, you know, coming into this seat. So thank you very much for your service and your friendship through the six years I was with you. So, thank you.
So I'm going to come down, and I want to say my remarks down at the podium. After I speak, I'd like to invite my colleagues to come down while we present the Key to the City, because you get a key to the city, and not the little dinky one that you got earlier. You like a real key to the city. No offense to the little key back there.
Does it come with a parking pass?
You know what? We'll find you a parking pass. And we're gonna do a proclamation, and then, my favorite, the street sign. So I'm really excited to see that. So I'm gonna come down and say a few words. All right, Mary Ann, so...
What time is it?
We've got plenty of time. So it's genuinely an honor. Okay, well, I'd like to... It is an honor to be in this role, to be here tonight, to honor you. When we moved here in 2001, we kind of started watching, right? We're just a young family and raising our kids. And I start coming to meetings, and I gotta get involved in the city. And you welcomed me, much like everyone did, because I think that was the culture of something you created, was a space where newcomers could feel welcome amongst old-timers, right?
Long-timers.
Sorry, it's old-timers. Old-timers? And I appreciated that. And our family appreciated that, because as we went out into the community, we started to see what it takes to actually build a city. And I don't think, I think most people in this room understand. But I don't think the average resident understands the amount of time, the energy, dedication that it actually takes to build a city, a great city, like the one we all live in. And so when I got appointed to community services, I would sit over there, and I would watch. And I would watch you govern, and I know I didn't see all the fun stuff in closed session, although we're gonna see it now. But you were someone that I did look to, much like I looked to Jeff, and the way that you interacted and the way that you tried to problem-solve and work through things. And I think I just appreciated that most. So I want to say thank you, you know, for the city that you built, but for being an example, for mentoring younger electeds, right? When I was elected and you were re-elected in 2018, who would have known? The next four years would have been like total chaos. But I needed you. I needed you more than I think you knew at the time to get through that. And I said it back in December, you know, you were like my mom, although I didn't need another mom. But you treated me like a son in a way that was, it was loving, it was caring, it was something that I valued. And I miss you. I miss some of those interactions, because Stu's right. There isn't something that's happened in this community that you haven't had your hands on. You have literally built this community from the ground up. And I've been many conversations with Squire Talks as well, and long text threads that somehow we live in different worlds, like you are awake at night, but I'm actually sleeping at night, and then we're on different rhythms, I guess. But I really just appreciate you. And I know you're not going anywhere. I know that this is your city, and you're gonna stay here and continue to shape and be a part of our community. And I'm forever grateful for the time that we've had together as electeds, but more importantly, the time that we have had and will continue to have as Temecula residents. So, thank you, Mary Ann Edwards.
He's doing an amazing job. An amazing job.
So we have a few things we want to present to you. So if my colleagues would like to come on down.
It's a little bigger.
It doesn't work on any locks in the city, though. So...
Beautiful.
So, Mary Ann Edwards, we'd like to present to you a Key to the City. And this is something that only the best of the best get. Only the most senior, long-timer, get. So congratulations on the Key to the City. There we go.
How's that? That's beautiful.
So we have a couple more things, and this is a City of Temecula proclamation. I'm not going to read all of this. Should I?
No!
Okay, hold on a second. Where?
No!
Everyone's like, "Don't do it."
You wanna notice this, call me, and I'll read it to you.
City of Temecula proclamation declaring today, Mary Ann Edwards' Day. Congratulations.
So honey, every year on August 17th...
It's her day. Every day is Mary Ann's Day. This is actually a downgrade.
Did I say we've been married 47 years?
More.
Just saying, I was seven when we got married.
One last thing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll send Public Works over to hang this up.
Telesio's coming down.
Right, Pat?
Yeah, Telesio's coming down.
Oh, wow. Don't tell him. So if you'd like to go and open that and show everyone.
I wonder what that is. Do you guys know what this is? You've been here before. This one's a little different. Okay, who put all the tape on here?
That is so fancy.
All right.
There is a story behind this sign, because before, I was wonderfully married to Thomas Squire Edwards. He's Squire because he's retired now, and he lords over the manor, so we call him Squire. My name was Mary Ann Place. A little play on words there. But, yeah, I thought this was lovely. And Telesio's sign's coming down. This is going up on my corner.
We'll go take it down right now?
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
And Mary Ann, I know, I now want to turn the mic over to you, so we'll go ahead and head back up to the dais and give you an opportunity to share some thoughts with us.
This is gonna be very quick, because you all have been very patient. You know, when you're the person that loves giving awards to other people, it's a little hard to be the object of all the awards and the attention. Nobody would ever believe that I, you know, don't like the attention. But, you know, day to day, you just go, you do what you love. And 20 years later, you know, you can look back and you see all the people that you've gotten to work with, the beautiful city that you live in, how many friends you have, people who've helped you along the way. And you're so grateful to have been able to be a part of that. This is, it's like a living, breathing organism, this city, and the way that it moves and flows, and, you know, we have our ups and downs. And for the most part, Temecula residents have been very content and very happy with their city and very proud. We've had a very difficult few years, and people are still kind of coming out of that. So it's been an honor to serve my neighbors and friends and fellow Temecula residents for these years. But as you're doing it, you don't think about it as service. You're doing what you love. I think we're all so very, very fortunate. This is one of the best cities anywhere in the country. And when I say "city" in this context, I don't mean city government and city family. Obviously, you're a part of everything. But I mean the place that we have made our home. And that's really what we've done. We've really made Temecula our home. And I always want Temecula to be a place where everyone feels welcome, everyone feels like they can get what they need, everyone has the opportunity to help and contribute. And when things like that, when things work out that way, you have that magic, that harmony. And I, you know, don't want to use the term Camelot, because it's overused, I think. But really, what that is, is you've maintained those relationships with your fellow residents, the people you live with, work with, patronize, you know, your clients, your coworkers. And when everything works, and there's a lot of give and take, not everybody can have everything they want every time. But it all works out in the end, and what you end up with is the best quality of life possible in a beautiful city like Temecula, California. You've built this city. You've made the city that you wanted. And don't take it for granted. You can see how quickly that can erode and change. So don't be afraid to speak up. Don't be afraid to voice your opinion. Don't be afraid to jump in with both feet and make a difference. I'm talking to the choir in this room, because you've all been part of developing this city and turning Temecula into what it is today, the best place to live, work, play, and raise a family. So thank you for allowing me to do what I love for the last 20 years. We've lived here 35. But as someone who has been able to participate with highly talented and caring professionals, and that's what these people are, you know, I'm the one, I'm the one who has won. I'm the one who has benefited, because I've gotten to do exactly what I love to do, working with people that I love and being able to help. And look what you've all done. When you leave tonight, pay attention when you go home. Sometimes we take things for granted. But, you know, when I come from my house to City Hall, I come down Papa Road, and I drive right past Ron Roberts Library. And that's a high point in the city. And from that view, I can see all the way around the city. And to this day, I still drive through there and think, "Oh, my gosh, I get to live here." Or, "Oh, my gosh, I'm the mayor." It never got old. And it's because when you're doing what you love, it never gets old. So love your friends, love your family, love your city, and love yourself. And thank you for 20 wonderful years. And we're gonna need a much bigger car to get out of here.
We'll throw it in my truck, I'll take it home.
And thank you all for coming, really. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you still gonna have a meeting?
You know, I think we still have to do business. But what we will do is we're gonna adjourn for fifteen minutes. We'll move, make our way over to the conference center, enjoy some refreshments and some personal time with Mary Ann. So we'll look to re-adjourn this meeting back here at eight forty-five. So we'll adjourn until eight forty-five. All right, everyone, we're gonna try to bring this meeting back to order. Just gonna give everybody a second or two as we filter in. I do see all of my council colleagues are here. So I am going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting at eight forty-nine. Please note that we are all still here with the noted absence of Councilmember Brown. We've moved through presentations and we're now at the Board and Commission Report. So let's go ahead and start with Community Services Commission Chair Seismore.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schwenk, City Council members, city staff. I'm Kathy Seismore. I am Chair of the Community Services Commission. We are a commission of five. Sitting on our commission, we have Commissioners Ernest Castro, Ewan Hawks, Jeff Kingsburg, Vice Chair Gary Adi, and myself. The Community Services Commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to the Parks and Recreation element of the general plan and works to provide parks and recreation services and programs for the community. Our last meeting was here in Council Chambers on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Next slide. At our meeting, we received public comments. We had the honor and the opportunity of having a filled City Hall with all the seats were full. We had several teams in attendance, the Temecula Little League and the girls softball teams. They had advanced from the state level up to the national level representing the city of Temecula. So they came to share and celebrate their opportunities with us. And we also approved the action minutes for the July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Our next meeting will be canceled due to the September eleventh remembrance event. So we recommend everyone attends that at the Duck Pond on Monday, September the eleventh at six P M. Our next meeting will be here in Council Chambers on Monday, October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on to our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission with Chair Steed.
Good evening, Mayor Schwenk and City Council members. We're happy to be here this evening. Our commission is met up of seven local community members. And the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhanced community relations. Our last meeting was on August tenth, and we had four presentations from the following groups. Our Community Service Department, we had a presentation from Erica Russo and Yvette Martinez. From Public Works Department, we had Pat Thomas that presented to us. And from the Community Mission of Hope Food Pantry, we had Allison Willetts. And Western Eagle Foundation, we had Savannah Cieja. So they shared with us some information in regards to availability of food within our community. We definitely had our eyes opened by the city's participation in this. So I definitely encourage anybody that hasn't seen the video of our meeting to take some time and look at it. With SB thirteen eighty-three, the Food Recovery Program, the city's very, very involved and has reporting requirements, so that was very interesting. And with the nonprofits that we work with and with the Community Services Department and their different daily meal programs for seniors and for school-going children during the summer and throughout the year, we can see how involved our city is in taking care of those that are less fortunate. Western Eagle has been around for a really long time. They did present to us and they did a great job, and they're such a great resource within our community. So we really enjoyed that and were able to give some feedback, ask some much-needed questions, and learn about their programs and how they can better help our community and those people that need them the most. Also, that is it for that. Our next meeting is coming up in September, and it's going to be Hispanic Heritage Month. So we definitely encourage everybody to show up to that September fourteenth at six P M. here in the council. As always, our commissioners will continue to attend community events, speak to our local residents, and get any feedback we can to bring back here to the city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and we appreciate the work that you do and both of your commissions in our community. We'll move to a Public Safety Report to County Riverside, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, Captain Durham. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and city residents. Here's your calls for service for the month of July in twenty twenty-three. Our year-to-date is forty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-one, which is just shy of last year's totals for this timeframe. For the month of July, we had six thousand one hundred and eighty-seven calls for service, which breaks down to roughly two hundred and six calls to service, to dispatch a day. And that ends my Public Safety Report. If there's any questions, I'll answer them now.
Okay, any questions for Captain Durham?
No, thank you.
We appreciate you, thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have two public comments. The first one is Susan Witten, to be followed by our last speaker, Gary Adi.
Well, the point is, is this timing is everything. And on Mary Ann Day, all the energy is obviously in her favor. But I learned more as a new resident about Temecula Valley and all of the services and programs that are offered through listening to all of the recognition of what this woman has accomplished. So you all, I'm sure, will definitely miss her. I am Susan Witten. I'm a member and a volunteer of the Temecula Valley Rose Society, which I think most of you know about, and especially our Rose Haven Heritage Garden. And I want to share with you a couple of things that are coming up in the next month in September that feed into the Ready Commission and the work they're doing, which is the recognition of the Peace and Friendship Garden, which was established last year, I believe, to recognize diversity within our, our community. There are forty-three peace poles in different languages, representing different cultures that are represented in the city of Temecula, as well as the community of Temecula Valley. We are going to collaborate with the students of Great Oaks High School in their International Baccalaureate Program. They put on a Friendship Day in July for us that was kind of their little kickoff to see how things were gonna work, and it went really, really well. They had games set up, they had a scavenger hunt. People from the community came in and the kids just loved it. And lots of people were there for pique dicks that day, so families were able to participate. So they're gonna put on the celebration. International Peace Day is actually the twenty-first of September. We're celebrating it on the twenty-third on Saturday. And they will start at ten A M., sharing their culture clubs that represent their student body, which I think is going to be very interesting. They'll have programs and speeches and dances. But they're also gonna share their desire for peace in their lifetime, which I think will be very enlightening from this generation. And lastly, you know that we do a lot of work with children in education, teaching them the joy of planting, of seeing things bloom, and seeing things grow right before their eyes. And we've put on a lot of programs over the years. We will start our fall season of the Families in the Garden in September the sixteenth. And we hope that everyone will go to our website, temeculavallierosesociety.org, and see what the calendar looks like for this next year and to register and come. Bring your kids, your grandchildren, your cousins, your aunts, your uncles, your nieces and nephews, and enjoy. You do need to register for that because we do have limited parking, parking there, as you know, and the flow in the park, so we can have it be a meaningful time. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is we want to thank the City of Temecula, Temecula Community Services for the past support that we have gotten from the grant program and the recognition and the participation. I know some of the Boy Scouts, you know, are, know some of our members, and they do a lot of work for us in building bat boxes and bird cages and the new library, lending library that we're gonna be putting in. So we want to say thank you. And then lastly, we're hoping we can partner with the City's Junior STEM Program and the STEM programs throughout the high schools in Temecula Valley, where we can foster science, technology, engineering, and math leaders of the future who can problem-solve the ever-changing, growing environment and challenges that we face. So please come visit us if you haven't been there because it's an amazing place. The volunteers provide ninety percent of the maintenance and the growth of the garden. So we do the weeding, we do the planting, we do the mulching, we do the composting. We do a little bit of everything, and everybody has a specialty. My husband and I just moved here two years ago, and so I'm doing grant writing and he's doing the pot. So I think he has a more colorful process with the koi fish. But anyway, we're, we're trying to continue to improve it.
Thank you so much. Your turn's up, thank you. Plus about a minute. Next speaker?
Our last speaker is Gary Adi.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having Bike Temecula Valley here. And we are gonna be talking about Cycle for Hope. I have one of our Board of Directors, Dale Borgeson, with me. And also in the audience, another Board of Director, Shelley Jackson. I believe each one of you, if you didn't get one, you're getting a flyer with a nice Q R code on it to get information about registering, sponsoring, volunteering, and so forth. But I'd like to start off by saying that we'd like to thank the City Council and especially Mayor Schwenk and Mayor Prochem Stewart for your discretionary support of Cycle for Hope. And that, you know, we're hoping that we get, get more support as we go along. We have actually two causes. The first and foremost for this event is it's put on to benefit Community Mission of Hope, Ranch de Damocedas, to help stop homelessness and hunger in our community. We plan on at least doubling our gift to this cause this year from last year. And we hope to grow exponentially each year forward. The second thing is, though, is that Cycle for Hope is a healthy community event that brings our community together. Our rides show off the best infrastructure, the built environment, the fine neighborhoods, and of course, our cherished wine country. We have, it even goes by the Rose Garden. We have suggested to those who are traveling from outside Temecula that they should take advantage of all the great amenities here in Temecula that we have to offer. Well, just taking one morning during their weekend here in Temecula to take a nice ride for a great cause. So we're hoping that the, the city will push in many ways to have staff involved and City Council share in your areas the benefits of this event. We do already have the community coming together with middle school bands. And our high school bands will be playing along the course and at our village. We also are using a lot of our local vendors to have our party at the village. We also have Michael Alford from Emergency Management is setting up ham radio operators to help us have a safer course this year with communication. Mike Wooton will be bringing homeless outreach to the village to, because of the theme of helping homelessness and hunger. And then also the great traffic support that we've had with this event is back this year to help us have a safe and encouraging event. And as always, Community Service, Public Works, with all they do to make this event amazing, safe, and enjoyable. So thank you, and please break out those bikes, get yourself registered. We've got all kinds of nice rides, nice fifteen-mile community ride. Dale will be taking a group on a little tour of our bike trails, all the way out to Joseph Road, back down the Santa Gertrudas Trail into Old Town for the Creek Walk, and then back up into the hills and back to our, our village. So even if you could just come out and do the fifteen community ride, that would be great. If you're feeling energetic, you know, we have the twenty-five and fifty that take you out into the wine country. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to, so Madam City Clerk, those are the only public comments? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our City Council Reports. Councilmember Brendan Kalfis.
I do have a short, two-minute video here for the ten people in the audience and the few watching online. Go ahead and roll it. Hi, Temecula, I'm Brendan Kalfis. I'm honored to serve as one of your newest City Council members. For those of you that don't know, I was born and raised in Temecula and been here since nineteen ninety-one. I'm also a firefighter, paramedic, and arson investigator. Today, I wanted to share with you that effective July first, twenty twenty-three, the city of Temecula has achieved a fire I S O rating of two, previously at a three. Every five years, our city is reevaluated. In two thousand and eighteen, we were rated a three. Moving up to a two now in two thousand and twenty-three is an incredible accomplishment. It places the city of Temecula within the top seven percent in the nation for our superior fire suppression capabilities. So what does this mean for you besides peace of mind? Well, I S O stands for Insurance Services Office. Usually, insurance companies use this I S O rating information as a factor when deciding what policies to write and what prices to charge for insurance premiums. So homeowners and business owners, we hear you, and rising insurance premiums is a concern. So I wanted to make the city's excellent I S O rating well-known so that you can share it with your insurance company. And did you know that Temecula is the first contract with Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department to achieve an I S O fire rating of two? The person that made that happen is right here, Temecula Fire Chief John Crater.
Thank you, Councilman. Being recognized as a I S O two department is a testament for the hard work and dedication of our firefighters. Our contract and collaboration with the city provides staffing of four firefighters per engine. Temecula also has five fire station locations, public education, fire prevention programs. We'll continue to strive for excellence and keep Temecula safe.
Thank you, Chief. Well, Temecula, hopefully this good news is helpful. Feel free to reach out to us, the city, if you have any questions. That's all I got, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Hey, I love that. I think that, that council spotlight is really cool. And, you know, historically, it's, you know, it's new for us, right, to be able to do this? And I hope all the, all my colleagues take advantage of being able to communicate with the community like that because it's, it's kind of the way we should be doing it. Everybody gets an opportunity. All right, Councilmember Alexander.
I just have one slide tonight. For all you soccer fans, all of you individuals who would love to be able to go to an incredible soccer competition with our neighbors next door on September thirtieth, Saturday at seven P M. at Chaparral High School, the Temecula Football Club versus Marietta is gonna be having their U S, U S Open Cup. And so this is gonna be a big game. So I just hope if you are a soccer fan or just want to check out something different, I hope that you can go out there, buy some tickets over at the Temecula Football Club, and come out and support our team. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Tim's here, nothing this evening, okay. I do have a couple slides, so if we could go ahead and, and throw one of them up really quickly. All right, so I definitely want to take a moment to acknowledge the tropical storm and the response, more importantly, that we, we brought to the community. And to say that we were prepared is, is really an understatement. I think what we saw from our emergency manager and team was nothing short of excellent. Seeing, I went past the, the lot on Santiago with, with all the sand and the sandbags multiple times. And to see, you know, hundreds of people out there taking the time and energy, helping their neighbors, helping, you know, some of our older, more vulnerable residents get their bags into their cars to protect their property, I think, was, was important. We fared well. I did a interview on CBS in the morning, and, and I was trying to recap what we had done. And, you know, we didn't bear the brunt of the storm. Some of our mountain communities did, our desert communities, especially in Riverside County, Chel Valley, got hammered. But I didn't want to let this go without thanking staff. thanking staff and our volunteers, our public safety partners for the time and energy that they put into this to make sure that our residents were prepared. And I'm glad that things weren't as bad as we thought they were going to be. It was nice to wake up and realize that we were prepared and our community fared well. So, thank you to everyone that helped and made that possible. On the heels of that, we have a National Preparedness Fair. So, mark your calendars. Saturday, September 9th, as the city hosts the National Preparedness Fair. At this family-friendly event, you can meet local disaster service workers, learn about emergency preparation, enjoy free children's activities, and more. The Community Services Department is working closely with our emergency manager, Michael Alfred, to ensure that this is another safe and successful event. And I think one of the things I said in that interview is the amount of time and energy we spend preparing for these things, whether it's wildland fire, earthquake, or now tropical storms. It's important that we continue to do this, and we invest in being prepared as a community as a whole because you never know, with the world we're living in now, what the next disaster might be. All right? Go ahead and move to the final slide really quickly, the State of the City. I wanted to take a second. I was truly an honor to present the message for our city to the broader community. From what I understand, there's about 900 people that came to Pachanga that morning, and it was like one of these highlights in your, at least in my political career, to be able to deliver that message. And as I looked out in the audience and a lot of the feedback that I got, it was upbeat, it was informative, it was kind of cutting-edge in a lot of ways. And that would not be possible without the team behind this. So, I get the privilege to deliver the message and take a little time and energy, obviously, to prepare for that. And thankfully, I can sleep and I'm not waking up at like 3:00 in the morning thinking I missed the State of the City because that was like a brutal couple of weeks. But I want to acknowledge the staff and the hard work, the time and energy that everyone put in to making this possible. There's an entire team dedicated, and many of them are photographed here, and whether it's, you know, some of the video production stuff, or whether it's the day of audio production, running the PowerPoint, the presentations, and things like that. This team is far and away the best team out there. And I am really excited, and Mayor Protem Stewart and I were chatting just briefly afterwards, and I'm really excited for you, Mayor Protem, to get the opportunity next year to present State of the City. And I think you are going to kick it, as the kids say. So, all right. Thank you. We will move on to our consent calendar. So, item number one is waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included on the agenda. Item two is approve action minutes of August 8th, 2023. Item three is approve list of demands. Four, approve City of Treasurers' report as of May 31st, 2023. Five, amend the capital improvement program budget for fiscal years 2024 through 28 for various projects. Six is approve form of Ranch of California Water District Recycle Water Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute said agreements on behalf of the city. Seven, approve First Amendment to the Agreement for On-Call Services for Kaiser Marston and Associates, Inc. Eight, adopt resolution to approve the Administering Agency State Agreement, Master Agreement, number 08-5459-S21 with the State of California Department of Transportation. Item number nine, approve increase to the Professional Services Contingency Authorization for the Margarita Recreation Center Project, PW17-21. Ten, approve the funding agreement with the County of Riverside for the Michael Mike Nigar Park Dog Park Renovation Project, PW21-14, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Eleven, approve specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for citywide Slurry Seal Program fiscal year 2022-23, PW23-16. Twelve, accept improvements and file notice of completion for traffic signal park and ride access improvements, PW18-11. Thirteen, receive and file temporary street closures for 2023 Autumn Fest events. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. Yes. Go ahead, Mayor Protem Stewart, with a brief comment.
So, on the consent calendar, on item number five and actually 10, I just want people to realize that we have grant writers here who go after money at the state, federal, and regional levels that is in these particular items that allow us to do things that we might not necessarily, we can afford to do it, but we can use, we can leverage our money to create more money. And so, thank you, Pat Thomas, for all the leveraging you do at your level because a lot of that comes out of your house, too. So, thank you very much.
Yeah. A lot of time and energy goes into leveraging outside money. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to your meeting, President Stewart.
All right. I'll call to Temecula Community Service District. Madam Secretary, please note, we're all still here, as soon as I can find it. Where are we? Okay. Any public comments? All right. So, we'll move on to consent calendar, which is item number 14, approve action minutes of August 8th, 2023. Approve agreement, item 15, approve agreement with Titan Rental Group, Inc. for event and program rental items. Item number 16, approve annexation of track map number 37341 and 37341-17 within Summer's Bend to service level B residential streetlights, rates and charges located on the east side of Butterfield Stage and Long Valley Wash. I will take a motion.
Move consent.
Second.
Oh, wait. Item number 16, is that a?
It's all consent.
Oh, it's on consent. Okay. All right. So, it's been moved. Who's second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved to second. Please vote. All right. And that passes 4-0. Director report?
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. And general manager?
Nothing further, Mr. President?
All right. Any board of directors? Nothing. I will adjourn till the next one.
All right. Now, reconvene the City Council meeting. We have one item. It's a public hearing. Item number 17, introduce ordinance amending titles 5, 8, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code and adopt a resolution setting the fee for a tobacco shop permit and find that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I'll be presenting a Quality of Life Ordinance. The ordinance proposes three section updates, the first being Massage Establishments, Chapter 5.22. We did a major revision to this section of the ordinance a couple of years ago. We just want to update it to continue to reflect best practices. The second section is Tobacco Shops in Chapter 5.24 and 17.08. We want to update standards and streamline licensing and permitting for tobacco shops. And then, the third section is Smoking in Public Places of Employment. We want to update that section consistent with state law. This ordinance and these updates have been presented to the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee consisting of Councilmembers Alexander and Kalfis. The draft versions were presented on April 25th and then June 13th. In addition, we presented this to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee consisting of Commissioners Bob Hagel and Adam Ruiz on June 7th, and then the ordinance went to the Planning Commission and was adopted with unanimous approval on July 19th. I'd also like to point out that this was a, this effort was a joint effort between city staff and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and I want to give a big thank you to deputies Knitzer and Maynard for their help in helping us draft this ordinance. So, with regard to massage establishments, again, I mentioned, we had done a comprehensive revision. This is just updates for best practices. We would clarify the following, that alcohol massage services require physician's recommendation. Only service animals are permitted onsite at a massage establishment. We would also clarify that any alternative practices related to massage services require a CMT, CAMTC license, which is a California Massage Therapy Council License. We'd also clarify that certain medical professionals are exempt from massage regulations, and the update would require medical professionals to be onsite in order to use the exemption. And then finally, we would insert a user-friendly table for identifying violations. When Code and PD, they go out and they do these inspections, they have to sift through the ordinance and all the language, and we put that into a table format to make it more user-friendly. So, shifting gears from massage to tobacco, why are we here with regard to tobacco? Well, the RSO, Riverside Sheriff's Office, has a grant to enforce tobacco regulations, looking at sales to minors and then operation requirements as required by state law. Our tobacco ordinance, the city's ordinance, is antiquated. The last update was done in 2006, so we're in need of an update. And then also, RSO is requesting an update to the ordinance to address definitions, operations, state law, and enforcement issues. So, Temecula has 19 tobacco or vape shops. In comparison, you look at surrounding communities, Marietta has nine, and Menifee has seven. And the map shows the tobacco and vape shops in the red dots throughout the city. Here's an example of a couple tobacco shops located within the City of Temecula. And tobacco shops are presently permitted. This is our Use Matrix in the Development Code. The categories across the top, you see neighborhood commercial, community commercial, highway tourist, service commercial, and so on. Tobacco shops are permitted. You can see the P highlighted in CCHT and SC zones, and then they're conditionally permitted in the neighborhood commercial zones. And that's currently. And then, the proposed ordinance would implement an annual tobacco shop permit. We don't, we currently don't have that. We have a tobacco retailer's license requirement. So, the ordinance would require a tobacco shop permit programmed to address, first of all, quantity, and we would impose a maximum number of these shops within the city at a rate of one shop per 10,000 residents or 10 stores. That's similar to what we've applied to massage establishments when we updated that ordinance. We'd also look at separation. We'd implement a separation requirement from sensitive receptors and separation between such establishments at 500 feet. And sensitive receptors are defined in the Development Code and include homes, schools, parks, daycare centers, those sort of uses. And then signage, advertising and sign standards would have to follow our existing Development Code in the commercial zones. We'd limit size and location. And then, there'd be no signs depicting tobacco use would be allowed. And then, operations, tobacco products and paraphernalia shall not be kept within 10 feet of entrances. And then, employees shall not congregate at the entrances with the doors propped open. So, you have to be 21 to go into, to purchase tobacco. So, that's the purpose of that, is we don't need the doors open, allowing people to see inside. It's really for just 21 and over. And then, as far as accessory uses, we would prohibit samples and lounge-type activities, and that's consistent with state law. And the proposed ordinance would update the municipal code to address, I mentioned our last update was in 2006. Half of this stuff didn't even exist. So, we would clarify, we would address vape and electronic cigarettes, flavored tobacco, non-tobacco chewing dip products that contain nicotine, and then other various tobacco-related definitions that need to be updated. In terms of proximity of tobacco shops to residential neighborhoods, the ordinance would remove tobacco shops as a conditionally permitted use in the neighborhood commercial zone. So, NC is typically neighborhood commercial-serving areas closer to residences. Residents are, residents are a sensitive receptor, so we'd remove that conditional use permit requirement. And then, they'd just be allowed in the three zones, community commercial, service commercial, and highway tourist. And then, staff has calculated the cost to process the proposed tobacco shop permit, and the fees would be a new application fee of $854 and then a renewal. And we're looking at an annual renewal would be $346. So, again, that's looking at staff time to implement the passage permit ordinance and then applying that to tobacco as well. We see it being a similar process. And switching gears just one more time, smoking in places of employment, smoking within enclosed places of employment is prohibited by state law. So, the ordinance would remove an outdated exclusion for tobacco shops. And then, another change in state law reduced the number of hotel rooms allowed to be designated as smoking rooms. That went from 25% of the rooms to just 20%, and then the remainder would be non-smoking. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, staff has determined that the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt, specifically Section 15061B3. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance and also adopt the fee resolution for tobacco shop permits. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and also deputies Knitzer and Maynard are here to help me out as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Matt. Appreciate it. Are there any questions of staff at this moment? Mayor Protem Stewart?
So, what is the current application for a tobacco shop?
Business license and a retailer's license.
Okay. So...
No tobacco shop permit. Correct.
Anything else? Questions? Questions? Okay. I don't have any questions of staff, so thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments? There are none, so I will close the public hearing, and we'll just go ahead and move to comments of my colleagues. Councilmember Alexander.
I'll keep this brief. I know we're all tired and ready to get home, but first, I just wanted to say, great work. It was good working with City Councilmember Kalfis. You know, we had a couple hours in there just hashing things out, what's good, what's bad for the city, on some other items as well that's going to go along with this. So, I thank you for working with me on this and, you know, improving the city in areas where I really think it's going to make a difference. I also want to say thank you to the staff and also for the Sheriff's Department for doing your part as well, for just always putting those late nights in and trying to figure out, you know, what's going to be best for our city as well and putting your lives out there. But realistically, I can just tell you, you know, working here in the city next to a tobacco shop that just recently closed, I noticed a huge difference with the transients. They're gone. So, it's kind of interesting where we were having a lot of issues prior to, and it's kind of nice to be able to walk outside your establishment and know that, you know, you're in a good spot and not have to kind of worry about certain things. So, I know that an ordinance like this is definitely going to be good for our city. It's going to be good for a lot of our businesses in the area, and I think it's just going to flourish even more. And it's just weeding out a lot of the good and bad actors as well, and I think that's a really important thing to notice. And the last thing is that I really appreciate about this ordinance is the fact that, you know, we're keeping establishments away from schools, churches, parks, and residents, and closing those doors just to inviting kids into an establishment that is just adult-related is something that I'm just very appreciative of, that we're going to be closing those doors to not allow, you know, just kids to want to just be able to walk into these types of establishments and being able to keep them healthy. So, thank you for everybody for taking a part in this, and I appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kalfis, anything?
I'd just like to echo what Councilmember Alexander said real quick, and just to summarize for the, my councilmember colleagues that were not in the Subcommittee, the main differences or changes, I should say, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, for the massage institutions in our city, there will be no more in-home calls for massage therapists. And for the tobacco shops, this would maximize our shops at 12 stores in our city with the population being a little less than 120,000. And then, no, as well, no neon signs, et cetera, no tobacco shops in neighborhood commercial zones. And the smoking ordinance was self-explanatory. But just to summarize, that was the main new inputs that we put within this.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Stewart, anything?
Another question real quick. So, is a tobacco shop defined as a business that only sells tobacco? Or is it defined as like a convenience store that sells a lot of tobacco? I mean, how does that?
Good question. Tobacco shop would be primarily... Good question. Tobacco shop would be primarily engaged in selling tobacco-type products.
Right.
You have other, you have other stores, grocery stores, maybe that sell, it's an incidental sale or incidental use. They wouldn't be required to get the tobacco shop permit.
Okay.
It's just those that are primarily engaged in tobacco sales.
Got it. That's all I...
Okay. All right. I just have a few comments and then one question for the Subcommittee. So, I think, you know, reading the updates over the last, I think you met twice on this, which I think y'all did a really good job on a lot of this. I read one of the updates and says, essentially, while there were concerns regarding a potential prohibition of smoking along public sidewalks, councilmembers were supportive of the overall efforts to actively improve the quality of life for the residents. So, my question is to the Subcommittee, is what were your concerns about smoking on public sidewalks? And specifically, we talk about children. We talk about elderly. We definitely don't want them impacted. We certainly even don't want kids really seeing it, right? We close the doors and we don't want them to see it. So, what was the biggest issue or what were your issues with putting a prohibition on smoking in our sidewalks, say, in our old town?
Yeah. I can hit into that. Because honestly, I think Brendan, I don't want to speak for you, but I think you were a little bit more kind of along the line where the mayor was in wanting to support the, possibly getting rid of smoking on sidewalks. So, one of the things I needed to look at is just the rights of the people, right? You know, I mean, it's public sidewalks. I used to be a smoker decades and decades ago. I'm not one of those people now. I can't stand smoke. I grew up with a smoker. You know, I just, I literally, I can't stand the smell of it. But how do I take the rights of some people from when they're on public sidewalks? You know, I know for me, it's one of those things. I have kids. If we're walking down, either all kind of cross the street. And I want to be able to give them their freedom as well. And I don't ever want to have to take that away. So, that's kind of one of those things. I actually started talking to people and residents in the area and like, what is your thought? What do you think? And I went over to one of the HOAs when I had a meeting with them. And it was mixed conversation. But a lot of people were like, hey, we don't want to take the rights away from people. Because once we start taking those rights away, what rights are next? And that's my biggest concern. So, I know we talked about maybe designated areas of smoking in Old Town, is that if that's a possibility. But I think the biggest overall picture was they wanted to get rid of smoking overall through all sidewalks. And I just wasn't okay with that. So, I think realistically, I know we're going to go in a deeper conversation and just really kind of hash that out, where I think it'll be a good time to really dig in. We'll have time to talk to our constituents and then bring it back to the council as a whole and say, hey, what's your guys' thought as well? So, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, fair enough. Anything to add?
Nope, exactly what she said. I was for prohibiting smoking on public sidewalks, just because I believed in keeping Old Town. Mainly, my focus was Old Town, keeping it more of a family environment and whether you're smoking. But like she talked about, we had, we had our disagreements. But we will hash it out in our Public Safety Subcommittee there. But and the hard part was the designated smoking areas. Like, how do we decide which areas become the designated smoking areas? And does that deteriorate, that little area? So, it was, it was a hard workaround, trying to, trying to make everyone happy and please everyone. So, we'll definitely head back to the Subcommittee. And if you guys have any comments, we would love the input. And that way, we can discuss more in that Subcommittee.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, thank you for, you know, the honest replies. Because, you know, initially, I was like, I don't get it. Like, we're trying to protect. And, you know, we want, certainly want to protect kids, right? And, and keep Old Town family-friendly. And I, to some extent, understand some of the, you know, the rights and liberties. But, you know, America is really about ordered liberty. It's like, it's not just unfettered liberty. You know, we, we pull back on things when it's, there's a public safety issue. And I think this is one. So, I hope you all go back and hammer this out. I don't know how you carve out spaces where you're going to talk to a business owner and get, and they're like, hey, do you want a smoking section in front of your business? I think you're going to have a tough time ahead of you. But anyways, I hope to see that back. You know, hopefully, you guys are in a Subcommittee in the next little bit and can bring it, this back. Because I, I do think it's something that would improve the quality of life and health in our community. So, cool.
If I can add to that, actually, City Manager, if we could possibly have a conversation with the Old Town, sorry, it's late.
OTTA.
Thank you, yes. The OTTA. I think that would be really helpful to kind of bring in some of the businesses and let's get their perspective, you know, whether it be bars and just get a wide variety of businesses. So, that way, we can really make a good decision on that as well.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Okay, so, we do have business in front of us. Are there any more comments? Or I'll entertain a motion to approve item 17.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All right. Peter, do I need to read the title?
No. Mercifully, the state law changed at the beginning of this year. So, we don't have to read the title.
That's right. We waived those. Thanks. Okay. And that passes 4-0. All right. And certainly looking forward to seeing that smoking item back in front of us in the near future. Okay, departmental reports are received and filed. Items for future city council agendas. Do any of my colleagues have anything for a future agenda?
Nope.
I did have one item, Mayor.
Bring it.
Tonight, I would ask the balance of the council to allow the city staff to give us a presentation on CLTs, so, community land trusts. It's already in our housing element. Community land trust, to me, would essentially be an avenue for attainable home ownership for our local workforce. It's something that is in our housing element that we have not utilized. I would, I'm just asking for your approval tonight to have staff give us a presentation on community land trust, as well as the Surplus Lands Act, to see what surplus lands the city currently owns that could be utilized for those community land trusts. So, tonight, I will just make a motion for staff to give us a staff report on community land trust, as well as the Surplus Lands Act, as well as lands that we currently own in the city that could be used for that land trust.
Okay. Maybe just a quick question. So, the land trust, I believe WR-COG is working on land trust for our region. Is that true, Lou?
They were.
They were.
I'm not sure where that effort stands at this time.
Yeah, I haven't.
But they definitely were.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything in a while. Okay. That was, that was it. Okay. Let us All right. Coming to a council meeting near you, 4-0. Okay. City Manager, report. Anything?
Mr. Mayor, two quick items. First, didn't want the night to close without acknowledging Happy Birthday Councilmember Calphus. There you are on the big screen. So, enjoy the rest of your day. Secondly, I thought it was important to just disclose to the community, French Valley Parkway has multiple phases to it. Everyone knows we're under construction on Phase Two. It took 20 years to cobble together $133 million to get that project under construction and a lot of good fortune and a lot of hard work. But we're not sitting back without starting this process for Phase Three, which is the final phase. Very expensive, as you can see there, $226.7 million, of which we just sent off a application to the federal government this week, seeking $133.8 million. So, keep your fingers crossed. But I think my point that I wanted to make is these things take a long time. They sometimes take two decades. And there is a starting point. And we have more than started, given that we've already invested about $3.3 million in right of way. And we're working with RCTC closely. And Pat will have some good news down the road there. But we're trying to be competitive. And there's three rounds of the infra grant process. And the first one, we are in. And we'll see how things play out. So, important to, to look out into the future and certainly shake the bushes here to Mayor Protem's point earlier. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Attorney, anything?
We have no reportable actions from closed session tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to adjournment. We will adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:37. Everyone, have a wonderful evening.